Good evening, everyone. I will now call to order the November 20th, 2025 Board of Education meeting. We acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of Chu-Montangwa, Fernando Tatwam, and the first nation on which we are learning, educating, and leaving. Ms. Cuseo, could you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
Okay. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ketera, please call the roll call at this time.
Member Cano.
Present.
Member Olson.
Present.
Clerk Weisberg.
Present.
Vice President Pontra Kamkar.
Present.
President Agakanyan.
Present. We have five members. We have forum, five reporting on closed session. There's nothing to report on the closed session. Six adjustments to the agenda. So we are pulling item 11A. And then that's the only one, right?
And Dr. Agakanyan, we have one more just to share it with me. Can we pull 12A so we can get an updated, sorry, 12I? Let me correct myself. 12I to get an updated contract for that one.
That's fine. 11A and 12I. Anything else? All right. Item seven, items for future agendas. Yes, Ms. Olson.
So what I wanted to ask for, a couple things. I wanted to ask for a report on all of our spending legally since June, looking to see kind of a breakdown of not just the, can everybody hear me? The legal costs incurred, but disseminated by the different types of spending, whether it's special ed, et cetera. I do think that that would help us gather some data so that we could make strong decisions as we think about legal services in the future. The other thing that I wanted to ask about was, I'm just kind of noticing a pattern in our contracts. It's also something that I've, it was my former business to do business with school districts, and I would like to see a better process to evaluating our renewals. And so I would like to have a list of all of our vendors and the timeline of the contracts and when they come out of date, so that we can just be a little bit ahead of reviewing their value prop to us, and if it's still the best bang for our buck. Does anyone have any comments on that? Adds additions?
No, I think it's great.
Those are my requests. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to item eight, presentations and recognitions. A recognition of 2026 Commanded Merit Scholars. Dr. Knappich.
Good evening, Board President Agakanyan, Vice President Pontra Kamkar, and the board members and distinguished colleagues. I am here in place of Mr. Newp, Principal of John Burrows High School. He is unable to attend because he is chaperoning a school trip right now. So I am here to announce the John Burrows High School National Merit Scholarship. All right. So our first one, in recognition of the 2526 National Merit Scholar Letter of Commendation, is Andrew Francisco. Our second is James Freiberger. I believe he was unable to attend tonight, but I heard that his mom's here today. Congratulations. You had a part of that, I'm sure. Our third recipient with a National Merit Scholar Letter of Commendation is Amy Harkins. Burrows' next recipient is Nicholas Shi. Ms. Freiberger, you want to take his? No, I'm kidding. Our next recipient of the National Merit Scholar Letter of Commendation is Otis Short. And our last recipient from John Burrows High School, National Merit Scholar Letter of Commendation for, Mackenzie Walker. Congratulations to our John Burrows High School candidates.
If my colleagues can join us with the superintendent for a photo with the individuals.
Congratulations. You guys are such a big team. I should stand right here.
Can everyone look over there?
Get a little closer.
And now I would like to introduce Mr. Stephen Hubbell, Principal of Burbank High School, to recognize Burbank High's National Merit Scholarship Letters of Commendation and a semifinalist.
Thank you, everyone, for having me here. I'll start off with our commended scholars. First person, Rachel Diaz. Our second one is Rehnu Demedi. We do have an event tonight, as I know everyone. We have an IMA event. Amia Chef. And we do have a semifinalist who I also know is not here, because there's an intermural IMA event going on now. Our semifinalist for Merit Scholar is Sebastian Pei.
We can join you for a photo if you want. And congratulations to all of our winners. 8B, Presentation of Burbank Arts and Education Foundation Fall Grant Cycle. Superintendent Dr. Macias.
Thank you. Congratulations. It is always a joy when we have a time to share with the community. Reporting out of our grant cycle that was sponsored, fundraised by our Burbank Arts and Education Foundation individuals, they're here, and I want to welcome to the podium Caroline Solberg and Jennifer Lurigo, and others who are here to share in the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, President Agakanyan and School Board. Good evening, Dr. Macias and school staff and the community. We are thrilled to be here this evening to share with you the grants that we have provided this, during this fall cycle. As I mentioned, your school, if you're here representing this school, if you could come up and join us and stand here, that would be fantastic, and I'm going to begin with the list. Okay. Beginning is Edison Elementary. We provided money for auditorium fans, for fifth-grade novels, and for curriculum lab instruction tools. Washington Elementary, art supplies and little library boxes and books. Roosevelt Elementary, art supplies. Stevenson Elementary, computer lab equipment. Bret Hart Elementary, equipment for their de-escalation space. Miller Elementary, theater workshop for kindergarten. John Muir Middle School, seventh-grade novels, art supplies for the Deaf and Hardened Hearing Program, equipment for their de-escalation space, and a speaker for the Muir Empowered Day. John Burrows High School, band instruments and stage lights and support for Skills USA Project. Burbank High, band equipment and campus signs to help students find classrooms. Magnolia Park, art supplies. We also provided a grant for English teachers from Muir, Huerta, Luther, Burbank High and Burrows to attend the English Conference. And now I'd like to bring forth our chairperson, Jen Luriga.
Thank you, Caroline, and thank you to the fabulous educators and administrators who thoughtfully wrote and submitted these grants that will have a lasting effect on Burbank students. Thank you, Dr. Macias and district staff, President Agakanyan, and board members for having us here tonight to share the impact of Burbank Arts and Education Foundation's fundraising dollars. None of these grants would be possible without the support of our wonderful community of donors. And tonight, we're lucky to be joined by some of our top donors, a few of our most passionate and longest-standing supporters. I'd like to have them come up, so please join me in thanking and bringing up Sharon And Judy and Ernest Dellinger. You and all our fantastic donors make this gift possible. We are thrilled to present, Gavin's going to bring it up, this literally huge check representing $100,000. Yay! I know, it's too tall. In grants and pledged funds to the Burbank Unified School District in 2025. So, thank you. And we'd love to do a picture, and also we have some other BAF board members here, so if you could all come up, too. Thank you.
We're going to join you guys up here.
Okay. Need like apple boxes or something.
All right, everyone, let's gather up, big check.
Are you due?
You're out of luck with me behind you.
One, two, three.
Sharon, right.
Oh, there you go.
Cash, this is for.
Yeah, you could slide.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you to all of our supporters, donors. Let's have it, let's hear another round of applause for BAF. All right. Reports from the board. Now, item, we're on item 9A, student reports. So we have right now Haik Sambatian from Monterey. Haik is not here. Oh, it's only you. Okay. Where is everyone? And now we have Haley Hong from John Burrows High School. Hi, Haley, how are you?
Hello and good evening, President Dr. Agakanyan, distinguished board members, Superintendent Dr. Macias, district staff, and members of the Burbank community. I'm here to share my report for John Burrows High School as of November 20th, 2025. Starting with sports news, our fall teams have wrapped up their seasons while our winter sports are beginning to prepare for their season openers. A big congratulations to both of our cross-country varsity teams for successfully completing CIF prelims last week on Friday, November 14th, at Matzak. The girls placed third out of 19 teams, and this is the second time in a row that they qualified for CIF finals. The boys placed fourth out of 18 teams, and this marks the first time the team has qualified for finals since 2017. We wish everyone the best of luck as they compete in CIF finals this Saturday. On Friday, November 14th, in the Brian Hurst Gym, our award-winning JBS Jazz Band performed their Latin funk night. Everyone had an amazing evening filled with groovy music, Latin rhythms, and unforgettable fun. Looking ahead in our arts department, drama is gearing up to showcase their fall play with a clever production of Brandon Jacobs Jenkins' Everybody. As the retelling of the morality play Every Man, Everybody is a poignant piece challenging the meaning of life and death. What makes it even more interesting is that each show is unique thanks to a live onstage lottery for roles, so each performance is a new experience for the audience and the cast. We invite everyone to come watch our JBS Drama's amazing production of This Journey Through the Afterlife, this Friday, November 21st, and Saturday to 22nd at 7:00 PM, and Sunday to 23rd at 2:00 PM. Tickets are on sale now with prices of $25 for adults, $15 for students and seniors, and $10 for students with ASB cards. On Thursday, December 4th, Linker is hosting their annual cocoa and cram in the mezzanine after school from 3:30 to 5:00 PM. Freshmen are invited to enjoy hot cocoa with their friends in a cozy, quiet area to help them prepare for finals. Tomorrow, Friday, November 21st, is the annual Holiday in the Park, a class-defensive event on Magnolia that brings the city together in a night of fun and joy. Many of our schools' organizations, including sports teams and music groups, will be having booths to promote and fundraise for their programs, including Linker and ASB, where we'll be selling holiday teddy bears, new and exclusive school merchandise, handmade goods, and raffling holiday baskets. Lastly, I would like to address the board regarding some housekeeping items ASB has with the new food and service regulations. In previous years, the board policy regarding food sales states that noncompliant food items can only be sold one half hour after the final dismissal bell each day. Additional sales for fundraising purposes by approved student or parent group may occur on four different days per year, but these sales must be held on the same four days for all organizations. ASB has reserved these four days annually for our Fall and Spring Food Festival and two student-faculty luncheons. Our Fall Food Festival was scheduled to take place this Friday, November 21st. However, we have recently had to postpone this event because we are made aware of the implementation of contemporary guidelines that prohibit us from distributing food to the others on campus during the school day. We would like to assure the board that ASB has always remained committed to adhering to all existing rules and regulations to ensure that all events are fun, permissible, and beneficial to our boroughs' community. The Fall Food Festival has long been a cornerstone of the club culture at our school, and we simply wish to ensure that moving forward, our clubs and other student organizations are able to generate necessary funding and community engagement as successfully as in the past, while still fully complying with all rules and regulations. Overall, we have no other major concern to share at this moment. Thank you. I can now take any clarifications or questions.
So how were you made aware of the more recent sort of compliance issue?
So we were like already planning this like event for like a couple weeks now, and then we got notified by our director of food services at Burrows, Ms. Armenta, that there are some like issues going on that like something was happening with like new board policies kind of getting in place, or just something like a renovation of it or something with like new food policy with the new like national like administration. So we just kind of heard from there, yeah.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'll definitely look into it. I have not heard about any new policies, but I think it's worth checking out, and Dr. Macias is already nodding and making a note. And always, because when did you, when did you find out about this?
Tuesday.
So don't wait. Call Dr. Macias, email or call one of us. It's always great to bring it here, but let us know so that we could have maybe gotten an answer sooner than tomorrow. But we will get on it, and thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you. Any other comments, my colleagues? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have 9B, BTA, CACA, and BASSA reports. I see Ms. Flossy from CSCA. No. Who is here? Laura Bowman, sorry, from BTA. CSCA, I'm sorry, and Rachel.
It's true.
Hi. Hi, how are you?
Hi, great, thanks. How are you?
Good.
Good evening, community members, members of the Board of Education, and fellow BUSD employees. My name is Rachel Zonschain, and I am a Burbank teacher and the treasurer of the Burbank Teachers Association, representing over 700 teachers, counselors, nurses, child development teachers, adult schoolteachers, and speech-language pathologists in BUSD. Today, I want to speak about the importance of qualifying the California Children's Education and Healthcare Protection Act of 2026, a permanent extension of 2016's Proposition 55 for the November ballot. For any of you who were involved in public education in 2016, you know the importance of the funding from Proposition 55, which generated over $14.6 billion for California's public schools and community colleges. If Proposition 55 expires in 2031, BUSD could lose $21.7 million in state funding. That is roughly $8.6 million more than the funding cut we experienced in 2008 financial crisis, which led to pink slips for 128 district employees. At a time when we are fighting to preserve programs and services, a budget cut of this size is unthinkable. The California Education and Healthcare Protection Act of 2026 is just an extension of the status quo. While we can argue over the adequacy of the status quo, we can't ignore the harm our schools would face if this funding expired. This measure asks voters to continue the investments they have twice approved before. It is also important to note that the measure impacts a tiny group of the highest income earners in the state, the top 2% of taxpayers, those families earning $700,000 or more per year. I urge our community to support qualifying this measure for the ballot. If you have the opportunity, please sign the petition to get the California Education and Healthcare Protection Act of 2026 on the ballot. California public schools generally, and Burbank Unified specifically, do not need more cuts, they need more investment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are now at item 9C, reports from the superintendent. Dr. Macias.
Thank you, Dr. Agakanyan. Want to start off my comments tonight, or reports, I should say, about the Burbank High School incident that occurred recently. We are always going to put safety and security of all our students, not only Burbank High, but of all our students and all our campuses throughout the district, at its highest priority. I want the community to know that we are having dialogue, it's continual, and we're committed to ensuring that any policies or measures that we take are indeed, we're involving the entire community in that dialogue. Most importantly for me is making sure that our students are heard, because that's who we are trying to protect, but any impact greatly impacts them. Along those lines as well, we want to make sure that our members of BTA and CSCA at all our campuses are also feeling safe and secure. So the dialogue will continue, it's already happening, and I and the team are very much committed to, I know our Board of Education is committed to that as well, too. Along those lines, I want to thank Burbank High School's PTA for inviting me to their most recent meeting. I was there with Mr. Hubbell and other district officials, Ms. Julie Markison. I know Ms. Freeman was there, so Dr. T got to hear directly from our members there, their concerns, and again, committed to the dialogue and were there to listen and will continue to listen. Also, was able to attend Roosevelt Elementary's PTA, and it was nice to hear and see the dialogue there and the spirit, the fundraising especially, and the whole community vibe around events, and just seeing that was an amazing experience. And I plan to visit as many PTA functions and meetings as much as I can physically fit within my schedule. I want to commend Monterey High School, the entire faculty, staff, the Friends of Monterey Group. This week, they had a site visit from two members that represented the California Department of Education. They applied to be a model continuation high school, and that was their site visit. And it was a phenomenal day. The visiting team concluded by sharing with staff, and I was able to be there to witness this, that they will be recommending to the state for this recognition. So that's a very good sign. The CDE will be making its final decision sometime in January, but we're very positive and hopeful for that recommendation and that recognition. Monterey High School is a lovely community. Kudos to, again, everyone on staff, our new principal, Daniel Dimondo. It was a great day, and I was glad to be a part of that experience along with other district staff, so thank you for that. Recently, actually several hours ago, an email was sent out broadly, reporting out our California school dashboard results that were recently published. Very happy to share with the community that we had a lot of blue and green, which are good, positive indicators. The website was shared out. Go definitely explore the page, your specific school community, but as a district, it's really positive to share that we had strong performance in areas like graduation rates, mathematics, English language arts, and suspension rates. At the same time, we do know that we have highlighted areas that we need to continue to grow and work on in support of our English language learners, our socio-economically disadvantaged students, and students with disabilities. This data is not just a snapshot or reflection report card, it's a means and a tool for improvement. So I'm very excited for the team to work on it. Our Director of Elementary and Secondary, Ms. Markison, and Dr. Harris behind me, along with Dr. Knappich, we're going to be working with our site principals, and I know they in turn will work with their school communities of teachers and support staff members. and support staff members, and it'll guide all our next steps when it comes to that. Was able to, I want to highlight two moments today, two events that took place at our school sites. And I don't want to discount that there's other events in other schools that are doing a lot of events, and it's always a proudful moment. But specifically today, I know McKinley Elementary had their career day. They had over 40 visitors. And I know that that school community, under the direction and guidance of Ms. Liz Costella, had a fantastic experience today. And also want to highlight the work of Dr. Miller and the Muir Middle School community. Today was their Muir Empowered Day, and it was a powerful experience. It's something that I know I tried to replicate when I was principal at Luther Burbank Middle School. But the kids specifically get to enjoy really a lot of conversations, a lot of character building, a lot of information. They have motivational speakers, highlighted areas in terms of cyber safety. There's just a whole lot that took place today, and I was happy to witness that. And again, kudos to the Muir Middle School community. I was also able to witness today our Elks Lodge members who donated to Roosevelt Elementary dictionaries to all our third graders today, and that was a wonderful experience. And with the anticipation that they are going to be donating dictionaries to all our third graders across Burbank Unified. So that is an amazing thing. The kids, when they were presented with them, because they were presented in classrooms, were very excited, and that was obviously very inspiring as well. So thank you to our Elks Lodge. And then lastly, I want to share an announcement that the Board of Education and I will be hosting a Community Town Hall. It will be December 16th. This will be an opportunity for our families, staff, students, community members to engage directly. Please expect details to come out shortly, and that will be hopefully sent out tomorrow. So I'm very excited about that opportunity, and that will conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Macias. Now we're going to Public Comments section. An individual group representative present this evening may address the Board of Education on any agenda items or any subjects within the jurisdiction of the school board by completing a white request card and turning it to Ms. Quetero. Speakers are requested to state their name prior to speaking to the board. Not more than five minutes may be allotted for each speaker except by the unanimous consent of the Board of Education. The superintendent may refer the matter to the proper department for review. The district is providing alternative to in-person attendees for viewing and participating. I don't see at this point any virtual public speakers. So with that, we have our first public speaker, Linda Wamsley.
Good evening. My name is Linda Wamsley. Tonight, I want to speak not in criticism, but out of genuine concern for the stability and daily functioning of our district. We are at a moment where multiple key leadership positions are vacant or soon to be vacant, or being filled on an interim basis. These include business services, human resources, technology, fiscal services, and the Chief Administrative Officer, positions essential to running a district of our size and complexity. Adding to this strain is the fact that the positions held by Mr. Cantwell and Dr. Ochenko remain unfilled while both employees have been on paid administrative leave for months. These are positions with substantial responsibilities, and the continued vacancies only increase the workload on the remaining leadership team. When so many seats at the leadership table are empty or inactive, the structure becomes fragile. The impact trickles down to classrooms, school sites, the district offices. Teachers feel it. Principals feel it. Classified staff feel it. And I know interim Superintendent Macias feels it. These vacancies affect facilities oversight, daily operations that must continue regardless of staffing, required state and county reporting with strict deadlines, procurement and purchasing where accuracy and oversight are essential, investigations and HR processes which require experienced leadership, budget development and monitoring, especially now when every dollar counts, and oversight of the recently passed $500 million bond measure. All of this is happening while Dr. Macias is being asked to juggle multiple executive-level responsibilities on top of his own. I want to acknowledge the tremendous effort he is making, but no superintendent, no matter how capable, can sustainably shoulder this level of workload without a strong, fully-staffed, permanent leadership team. So my questions tonight come from a place of wanting to see this district succeed. What is the plan for addressing these vacancies and soon-to-be other vacancies? Are searches for replacements actively underway, both for positions vacated by turnover and those currently inactive due to leave? Who is responsible for recruiting and outreach? And what proactive measures are being taken to ensure BUSD attracts candidates with the experience necessary to bring stability to these crucial departments? These positions cannot sit empty indefinitely. The longer they remain unfulfilled, the more risked the BUSD faces. Are outside experts being brought in to stabilize critical areas until permanent staff are hired? As someone who is proud to work in this district, I say this respectfully but firmly. We need a clear, public plan for recruitment, stabilization, and leadership support. Hope is not a staffing strategy. I share these concerns because I believe in the Burbank Unified School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Les Cohen. Les Cohen, thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Macias, district staff, members of the board, and community members. My name's Les Cohen. I've been a resident of Burbank for 34 years, and I'm a retired BUSD high school counselor. I'm here tonight to talk about money and minutes. I'm happy to see that your recent board meetings have shown that the delays in completing the legally required minutes of your meetings have been rectified. This is an accomplishment that is showing the community you're listening to our concerns and making us feel more confident in your leadership. Recently, I was looking at the work being done by the Surplus Property Advisory Committee. I read about some of the things that the committee has done and some of the decisions you made based on the report they prepared for you. I read that they met five times to complete their task. The agendas and minutes of their meeting can be viewed on the district website. Until quite recently, the minutes from May 14th had not been included in these listings. I see that the minutes from that date are now available, but they appear as unofficial minutes. I wonder if you can briefly explain why that is so. In addition to the agendas and minutes of those meetings, one can review other pertinent documents on the website. While reading them, I became concerned about the other topic that I wanted to speak about tonight: money. At your June 5th meeting, you received a comprehensive report from your attorneys. It lets all of us know that once district property is declared surplus, it can be sold at your discretion. At your July 10th meeting, based on the report you received from the Surplus Property Advisory Committee, you adopted Resolution 1, authorizing the pursuit of the sale of properties declared surplus in that report. Should it come to pass that these properties are sold, it is my hope that you will use the proceeds in the most productive manner possible. The law requires that the proceeds from the sale of surplus property shall generally be used for capital outlay or maintenance costs that the board determines will not recur during a five-year period. Currently, the district is receiving in excess of $8,000 monthly from your parking lot property. Are you certain that selling this property will be as lucrative to the district as the current rental situation? The community day school property could also be used as an ongoing source of revenue for the district. Please consider this and any decisions you're planning to make about money with care. This could be a good topic to cover during tonight's discussion of the Fiscal Review Committee later in your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin, is it Reiner? Sorry if I pronounced it wrong, but I hope I did.
Howdy. It's been a while since I've spoken at a board meeting. It used to be that you would read who was coming up next, too. I don't know if that's just somebody who has got away with, but it used to be you'd say the current speaker and then who the next speaker is, and it just kind of helps us be ready to know that we're going to come up when the next person's coming. My name is Justin Reiner. I've been teaching at John Muir Middle School, 8th grade English, for 22 years. When I was checking on the website to see when this date was, on the website multiple times, it said, "Student learning is the primary goal of the Burbank Unified School District", which is great. That's my goal, too, being in the classroom. If that's our primary goal, though, however, we need an environment that is conducive to that. Our classes are too big. General consensus, general practice, is that a fair class size is around 30 students. My classes are all 35 to 36 students. Essentially, I'm carrying a load of six classes in five classes. You're getting more for your money, I guess, which is great for you guys. However, it's very, very hard for us, and I know I'm not speaking just for myself. When we do things for saving a dollar, usually quality suffers. This takes up resources. When I have that many kids in my class, it takes up resources both mentally and physically. Aside from the fact that I am not being properly paid to take on a whole separate class within my five classes, it's a poor foundation for the students and the teacher alike. In Burbank, we say we prioritize inclusion. That's difficult to do with 36 people in the room. It's hard to include students. It's hard to get to know them. I can only call on so many students and involve them in the discussion. That becomes really hard. We say we prioritize equity, but it's difficult to do that in a class of 36. It's a challenge to meet individual needs of students, to know what their needs are. It's hard to keep track of a pile of accommodations in the classroom, make sure that we're doing that properly. It's very difficult to build a classroom culture. Generally, with that many kids, a bunch are able to just sink off to the side on their own, and so unfortunately, they're not included in that as well. It's a lot for an English teacher. If I assign an essay, and I want to spend just three minutes on each essay, that's going to take me over eight hours to grade, and three minutes is ridiculous. I'm asking the kids to write something to put their feelings down, and take time. To give them just three minutes is ridiculous. Keeping an eye on cheating is harder, and cheating is getting worse and worse. The more kids in the room mean that more students are coming in tardy. There's more call slips. There's more water bottles falling on the ground. Constant disruptions with that many kids. I don't have space for kids who are absent to make up work or take a test. If there's a kid who needs to be separated from the other kids, I have no place to put them away from any other kids. This is more parents to contact. There is constant questions. Can I go to the bathroom? Around 36 kids, that's a whole lot of disruptions and me keeping track of things. I know that it's easy to fall back and say the union agreed to this. I think the union agreed to this to give you some flex room, not to give me a whole nother class of kids within my five periods. Aside from the union, if student learning is our primary goal, then loading classes with 36 students is certainly affecting student learning. I've got six classes worth of kids in five classes. I'm not nearly as effective as I can be, and the kids are not getting the instruction that they deserve. Thanks.
Thank you. And next, we have Ira Lippman, followed by Alexandra Helfrich.
Good evening, members of the school board. I'm here to speak about the Five-Year Strategic Arts Plan that's going to be presented before you this evening. My name is Ira Lippman. I'm a resident of Burbank, and I'm chairman of the Board of Volt Light, Inc., where a lighting, live entertainment, lighting production company located here in Burbank, in the Avion Business Park just above Burbank Airport. We've been a community partner with the arts program for nine years through the CTE program, and we provide internships for the high school students from Burrows and Burbank High School. Each summer, we provide mentorship and training for students that are in your stagecraft participation in the CTE program. We offer them a way to learn about the industry. And to date, through those nine years, we've hired over two dozen full-time students working in our facility. We've trained them what a career in the live entertainment industry can be, and they can have a successful, rewarding career that doesn't necessarily track at a college education. I was invited to participate on this committee to develop the strategic plan by Peggy Flynn. It was my pleasure to work with your dedicated staff and teachers who deliver the instruction. I learned quite a bit about what goes into developing these programs. Your committee did a thorough and thoughtful job of creating this plan. I hope you'll introduce it and support it tonight. And likewise, if any of you are interested in seeing what a graduate from Burbank High co-founded this company here in Burbank, and we'd love to invite you for a tour, and you could even speak to some recently hired graduates from your school. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Ms. Helfrich. Is she here?
Good evening, board, Superintendent Macias, staff, and community. My name is Alexandra Helfrich, and I'm here to comment on Agenda Item 12B. An easy search of the Superior Court of Los Angeles County's website revealed that Burbank Unified currently has over a dozen civil suits pending against them. One of them is a wrongful termination lawsuit filed by a former employee. This information was shared with the board via email several months ago. The lawsuit alleges several violations of FIAH, California's Fair Employment and Housing Act. Charges include discrimination, harassment, retaliation, failure to provide reasonable accommodation, failure to engage in the interactive process, and failure to prevent discrimination, harassment, and retaliation. The lawsuit asks for economic, non-economic, and compensatory damages. Sounds like this could be another very expensive outcome for BUSD. According to the case documents, in 2023, the plaintiff alleges, dealing with ongoing harassment in a hostile work environment, despite repeated requests for help, the employee received no real support. And instead of ensuring fair treatment, the Human Resources Director and HR Assistant Superintendent Sarah Ochenko, now on paid administrative leave herself, used the situation to pressure the employee to resign. They told her the district had a strong case against her and warned that she was most likely to be terminated. They suggested it would be better for her to resign. On September 27, 2023, the HR Director and Ochenko first tried to persuade the employee by offering extended paid leave and positive references if she agreed to resign. When that didn't work, the plaintiff alleges they resorted to threats. They told her if she refused to resign, she would be put on unpaid leave, and her termination would be reported to future employees, essentially threatening to ruin her career. would be reported to future employees, essentially threatening to ruin her career. I think that's called blacklisting. They gave her only two days to decide. And when the employee still refused to resign, the district followed through on their threats. On September 29, she was told that if she chose to proceed with a hearing instead of quitting, she would be placed on unpaid administrative leave. On October 9, 2023, Burbank Unified officially put her on unpaid leave during the official hearing, unpaid leave during the official hearing process before any decisions were rendered, which is highly questionable. A formal evidentiary hearing took place on November 21, 2023, with both the employee and District Representative Andy Cantwell present. By the way, he's currently on paid administrative leave. On December 5, 2023, the neutral hearing officer released his decision. He found no just cause for termination and recommended that the employee be reinstated and all of her back pay and all benefits restored. Now, here comes the really troubling part. Despite the hearing officer's clear findings, Burbank Unified ignored his recommendations, did not reinstate the employee's back pay for benefits, and in January 24, the district terminated the employee in direct contradiction to the hearing officer's findings. This is highly unusual. I acknowledge and respect that the Board can't comment on this pending litigation or any others. But, and here's the real point, the community does expect the Board to clean house and entirely remove those in leadership positions that supported a culture that disregarded legal process and instead embraced bullying and abuse. Primo is gone. Please act quickly to fire and stop paying Cantwell and Ruchenko and others if necessary. And I'll close with this big question. Given the unusual and questionable circumstances, will the district's insurance through the JPA cover the damages should the decision in this case not be found in the district's favor? That could be a lot of money out of our general fund. Thank you.
All right, we have Kelly Clark, followed by Vladimir Hovonisian, and that's the last
Good evening, Board members. Interim Superintendent Dr. Macias and staff. My name is Kelly Clark. I'm a 36-year resident of Burbank and a district retiree. I spoke at the last meeting about the fiscal stabilization plan that must be board-approved and submitted to Los Angeles County Office of Education by December 5, and my concern that the issue had not been agendized. I see that it is not on tonight's agenda either, not even as a discussion item. As Member Kano said in the leader, this is big. This is really big, and it is indeed. The latest Laco correspondence says, and this is dated yesterday, for districts who need to provide a fiscal stabilization plan, both the plan and the first interim report are due on December 5. I know you know this because this isn't the first time Laco has asked for a fiscal stabilization plan. This is not normal practice for Laco to require these, and it's an indication of concerns about fiscal solvency. I have to ask how you will get these items board-approved and submitted to Laco by December 5, considering that tonight is the last regular meeting before that deadline. Thank you.
And last, we have Vladimir Hovonisian.
Good evening, everyone. Before anything else, I want to express our sincere gratitude to the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation, our Assistant Principal Jennifer Freeman, and our former Assistant Principal Edwin Taylor, and our Principal Stephen Hubbell. Their support made a student idea real. We're truly grateful. My name is Vladimir Hovonisian, and tonight I'd like to share the purpose behind our new campus wayfinding system and why it matters for the safety and structure of our school. This is one of our prototype signs. It looks simple, but its role is really important. In any emergency, whether medical, safety-related, or unexpected, clarity in schools' layout helps responders and staff reach the right place without delay. A school that is easy to navigate is a school that is safer, more coordinated, and better prepared. Every year, freshmen, newcomers, families, and even staff find themselves guessing directions. Schools are large, busy spaces, and no one can memorize hundreds of room locations. Clear signage also helps everyone move confidently, especially those who are still learning the campus. It also supports our school leaders. Right now, ASB spends time creating temporary event projects, posters, just to show visitors where to go. A permanent system removes focus on the, the permanent system removes the unnecessary work and allows ASB to focus on the programs and events that strengthen our school community. Thanks to the support of BAEF, the signs are now in printing. Once installation is complete, we will host an opening event to present the final system and to continue an important conversation, the importance of student-driven safety efforts in a time when schools everywhere face new challenges. This project is a reminder that improvement doesn't happen only from the top-down. It happens when students take responsibility, collaborate, and look for ways to strengthen the structure of their school, not with decorations or temporary fixes, but with ideas that endure. Thank you for supporting our work, and thank you again to everyone for believing in the potential of student leadership. We look forward to continuing this effort together. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Superintendent Macias. Dr. Macias, my apologies.
Thank you, Dr. Aga Khanyan. Before I actually comment on that, I forgot to mention a great big thank you for an appearance that I was invited to along with you, Dr. Aga Khanyan, from AAABCTV to share information about the Burbank High incident and to do some outreach. So a special thank you to Vreg Agajanian. So thank you for that. To our public speakers, thank you for being here. Thank you for your participation and engagement. Let me see if I can go in order here. Ms. Wamsley, the only thing I can respond to is that, yes, the team is very diligent. Thank you for your praises directly. The work is being done. We're very aware of it, very sensitive to it. In terms of the word vacancies, there aren't vacancies in two specific positions right now, and that's a big formal matter, and I can't address anything further. Mr. Cohen, thank you for being here and sharing your information about the surplus property. The meeting minutes you're referring to, about May 14 specifically, I don't believe at that time the group was able to meet again. We had events that took place in June, so that should provide some explanation and totally understand that, and we'll address that further. Mr. Reiner, thank you for your comments. Class size is very difficult, so you bring up equity, and I know that I stand for that. I know the team stands for that. Teaching and learning is obviously our biggest priority. Our Board supports that. We also have a very difficult combination of being equitable and fiscally responsible, and that's a tough one. And it's a conversation, yes, we do engage with BTA, CSCE, BSA included. You know, I have my own memories of being a classroom teacher, and obviously, yeah, I always enjoyed lower class sizes, and it's something that we're always going to strive to do. But again, our responsibility is to combine all our resources and be fiscally responsible as well. I don't, it is difficult to hear that your experience as a teacher has fundamentally changed. Grading, planning, the distractions that you have right now, the constant classroom management, and then, yes, carrying the heavy responsibility of being an educator and making sure that our students are not only learning but safe in the classroom. I acknowledge that. I see that. I do remember my time as a teacher. I am currently married to a BTA employee, so I know that very specifically. Your words are not unnoticed. They are something that I am going to heavily reflect on along with the team, and we will keep in mind when we are creating a budget and we're trying to do the best we can to protect all classrooms and all our school communities. So thank you for coming and speaking. To Mr. Lippman, please count me in for your invitation. Thank you for sharing that. I did get to meet you yesterday. Very excited about that opportunity and more excited to learn about more possibilities of allowing more pathways for our students who are in our programs right now. Thank you for your partnership and your continued partnership and support of our career tech programs and the arts programs and your role in this committee. So I thank you for that and for others in that program as well, and I know Ms. Flynn will share that a little bit later. So thank you for that. Ms. Helfrich, thank you for coming and sharing your concerns. Not much, as you stated, that can be commented on legal matters. For Vladimir, you're always awesome. Thank you for sharing. Your enthusiasm is something that inspires me, and I know inspires others on this team. You keep doing what you do and advocate for your fellow students, but I'm going to also challenge you to expand that. I think I've spoken to you directly about finding ways for us, me specifically, to connect with more student voice and getting more feedback, just like you're doing with this project, but we need to connect more with student voice. So I'm going to challenge you with that, so work with me on that one, please. And for Ms. Clark, I'm going to ask Dr. DeHaleme to respond to your concerns directly right
Thank you very much. Oh, sorry.
Hi there. So I did want to clarify, Laco released a bulletin, actually, two days ago, and so the FSP being due December 5 is really for Laco's internal review, and so there's language in the bulletin that indicates that even first interim can be uploaded to Laco pending board approval, essentially. And this is really an opportunity because Laco is meant to look at the FSP and first interim and approve it and then send it to the state, and so this allows for a few additional days for them to review. So that's still the plan. They're going to receive those documents before December 5. I do have a call with our Laco advisor tomorrow. I'm happy to just get that clarity in writing again from him, but in the Laco bulletin that was released two days ago, it does dictate those steps. I do also want to clarify that the FSP that's going to the Board for first interim will have exactly the same FSP that we had at our adopted budget plus a target number. That target number really is to eliminate deficit spending over the next few years. It won't indicate any sort of new positions that have been identified, any sort of programmatic cuts at this point. It's really going to dictate what is a target number that potentially needs to be cut. And then from there, real conversations with union partners, with program teams, with staff need to happen over the next few months. It's not something that fiscal services can just decide on our own, kind of in a silo. So I hope that clarifies the December 5 question.
Thank you, La. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Kano.
Okay. Mr. Cohen, thank you very much for publicly then basically saying where, if properties are sold, letting people know again where money is and how it can be used so that the general public doesn't think that if we sell the property, we can, you know, use it to pay salaries, or we can use it, you know, there's definite stipulations as to how it can be used. Mr. Reiner, he's not here anymore? Okay. I definitely, I understand. I mean, I remember having a class of 42 kids. It's very difficult when you have a lot of students, but I do think he just nailed it in what Dr. Macias said. As was teachers, we do know. It's a, we're in, I'm not doing six, seven either. It's one of those, it's that balance in terms of, you know, I want to have a job. Maybe I don't like having a lot of, you know, huge amounts of kids, but the flip side is I want to have a job. So, you know, as teachers, I think we do understand it, but let's keep voicing it so we can keep working to see how we can keep, you know, working at it. One thing I think I would say is just to the general public, the idea of understanding how, what the local funding formula is for our schools, for like a district like ours, still really needs to be addressed up in Sacramento. So people that come to these meetings, please, 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 you know, voice, talk to your other elected officials about how the funding formula is, because it just really doesn't work for a district like ours. Mr. Lippman, I would love to tour, to see your, that just, in fact, I was just talking to some kids because they were talking about, you know, what they're, we're going to look into when they got to high school, and I said, you know, one of the issues was the idea of going and doing the stage, you know, the wall production, and they got really excited about it, and so I'm thinking, wow, something like this is just over the top. Yeah, what Dr. Macias said in terms of, to Ms. Helfrich, yes, I wasn't here, but there's, we're listening to you and definitely taking all this into consideration. The, Vlad, I basically want to say something that you said, the words you said, you want to build ideas that can endure. And I was like, yeah. Excellent. Excellent. And I'm seeing you do that. In the time I've been here, the months I've been here, I have seen you just make so much growth, too. So congratulations. Keep going, and I just keep that as your mantra. You're building ideas that can endure.
Thank you very much. Board Member Olson.
In an effort not to be too repetitive, as Dr. Macias and fellow Board Member Kano address some of the things, I'll fill in some gaps where I can. First of all, I'm excited, Les, that you came forward and shared some things about facilities because it just causes all of our brains to kind of get creative. I'm learning, too, and you caused me to start thinking about what are some ways we can address the problems in a bit of a different manner and get a little creative with the way that the legislature finds us. So more to come, but I'm grateful for you stating everything you did. Mr. Reiner, I actually witnessed what your pain was in the classrooms this week, and I was doing some tours. Not only am I under five feet tall and just felt the crowded classroom, but I could see from an equity standpoint, like the crowd and how it was, you know, being leveraged in different spaces and places, but it also got my wheels turning about equity and what we do in the classroom. And again, thank you for bringing it forward. We do need to get creative. Mr. Lippman, it was so nice to get an invitation, and I also got to meet you and some of your team at the CTE meeting this week, which I have to give props to, that I was able to crash with my daughter that Dr. Macias and Ms. Flynn invited me to. But pathways, CTE, getting students' mindsets into where their careers go when they're in our schools is so powerful, and I got to see it live, and I'm grateful you came and gave a sense of that today, this evening. And Ms. Clark, I wanted to embellish on what was already shared because you pointed out something that was important, right? You pointed out that Laco in that document said December 5, and we are supposed to submit by December 15. And so I was also doing some investigating to find out, are we missing some deadlines? And I was grateful to get some team report back to me that we are able to submit in advance before board approval so that we aren't missing those deadlines. But again, you're calling attention to the fact that, you know, more ahead-of-the-game transparency is important. And last, thank you, Vladimir, for sharing, again, just more bright spots and props to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen, just a quick piece of information that I think will help, which is the reason that the surplus committee meeting minutes weren't official, is because that was the last time that the surplus committee met, so they didn't meet again to approve those minutes, which is why they're up on the website as they are. It was not an error, but in fact, just standard procedure. We, the process of selling or leasing surplus property is really complex. It requires multiple steps. Rest assured that we have an enormous amount of information that the committee provided us after their long and diligent work, and that we will make an informed decision. that we will make an informed decision. Mr. Reiner, yeah, I mean, I think what the story you tell, you told tonight is the story that educators tell everywhere across the country, which is the horrible state of public education, right? Like, and we could talk about funding formulas and how messed up they are, which is true. But the reality is, is that everywhere is suffering. Everybody is dealing with growing class sizes. And I don't say that as a dismissive comment, but rather as an acknowledgement of what it is just basically to be a teacher now, which is very different than it was to be a teacher 10 years ago, 20 years ago, that, you know, on top of all of the things that you very accurately listed, we're now mental health supporters, we are meal providers, we are, yeah, we are lockdown guiders. I mean, it is, it has changed entirely. And I don't think that, think that BTA remains an unbelievably agile, thoughtful bargaining partner with Burbank Unified. And they push really hard. And we try to accommodate as best we can because that's what our teachers and our classified staff in CSEA deserve. And the sad reality is that there are just limits. There are limits to what we can do and limits to what money we have available to us. And that does mean larger class sizes, which is, you know, I wish that there were creative ways to sort of work around it. And hopefully, there will be at some point. But I think all that I can do is just acknowledge where you're at and know that you are, you know, sharing things that almost any teacher that you would talk to today would share. And that if there are things that we can do to help alleviate some of the issues that you're facing, I think that's where we can get creative. Where, what are some things we can be doing to support our teachers as they do now have additional students in their classroom, which does, you know, it adds hours, it adds stress, it adds the inability to really work one-on-one with kiddos in the way that you want to. All that's true. So, I think it'll be an interesting conversation for us and maybe with our BTA partners to talk about, what are some things that we can do and support our teachers, knowing that we, at this point, don't really have a lot of fiscal wiggle room to reduce class sizes, which is sort of the stark reality of where we are. Mr. Lippman, thank you so much. I, like everybody here, would love to come visit. It sounds Mr. Hovonisian, thank you as always. I think your positivity and enthusiasm and investment in our schools is phenomenal and is a great reminder to me of why I do what I do. So, thank you, sir. The last thing I want to say is that, you know, a couple, this was many years ago, like my first year on the board, many years ago, before time. And Kimberly Clark, our esteemed clerk of the City of Burbank, at that time was working in the chair where Ms. Cindy Kuno sits. And she made a comment to somebody who was giving public comment. And she said, you know, you have to stop and ask yourself, is what I'm saying good for students, good for teachers, and good for staff? And if it isn't, then why am I saying it? And I think I'd just like to put that forward as a question to people who make the choice to come up to the dais and read a lengthy list of allegations without context that, to my mind, serve absolutely no purpose in helping our students, helping our teachers, or helping our staff. What it does do is continue to perpetuate the deeply negative scare tactics that are being utilized by some in our community, certainly not all, not tonight and not generally not all. But I see no, nothing in those comments that serves to lift our district up, to ask questions that make our experience for our students better, deeper, or teachers more supported. The word allegedly was only used once in pretty, what, five-minute public comment of alleged allegations. Those are questions that, as far as I'm concerned, do very little to help our schools. And the purpose seems to me to be just a continued attack on the district, an unrelenting, unproductive attack. And if people are as invested as they say they are, and I do believe it, Ms. Wamsley, I absolutely believe your dedication to the district. I think if that's where we're going, then we have to find a way to challenge one another without attacking and without scaring people for no reason. Mr. Cohen, you could have reached out at any point between now, November 6th and today to ask that question about the surplus questions, but you chose to wait until tonight. We want to be transparent, but you don't have to wait to a board meeting. I understand there's value in standing up in the dais and giving public comment and being televised. Totally get that. But we could have answered that May 14th question November 7th if you had it then, or whenever you had it. And just giving you a little bit of peace, you could have still come up and shared it, but we wouldn't have been able to alleviate your concerns, right? And say, hey, don't worry. There's actually a good reason for that and here's why. And so, I think if we're talking about transparency and restoring trust, which I really appreciate you bringing up when you talked about the minutes, we don't have to do that just at a board meeting. There's all this other time to do that in. And again, I'm not discouraging you. Always come. Always come and speak. But I would much rather be able to address your concerns when you have them as opposed to waiting weeks and weeks to address them. So, I hope that you will reach out to us so that they're, and same thing, Ms. Clark, I'm really glad that you brought, similar to what Board Member Olson said, I'm glad you continue to bring these concerns up. And we could have answered them earlier than today had you presented them to us. So, I do want to encourage our community again to ask, to ask, is what I'm bringing forward good for our students, good for our parents, good for our teachers, and good for our staff? And if it isn't, why am I asking it? And so, please not wait two weeks, three weeks, four weeks to ask us for clarification. We may not always give you the answer that you want. And maybe all of us don't respond. But again, I respond. Maybe not that second, but I respond. And I will always continue to respond. We may disagree, we may continue to disagree. But the reason we're up here is to try to be the best stewards possible for our district. And it remains deeply upsetting to me that some people are taking advantage of this tumultuous moment that we're in to try to cause harm rather than to begin the healing process or deepen that healing process. So, thank you to everybody else for speaking. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Vice President Kamka.
Thank you, Dr. Agakanyan. I don't have much to add to the response from Dr. Macias and Dr. Abdalhamid and my colleagues, other than just thank you to all our speakers who came to public comment. I think I just, I do want to say thank you for, I do feel like the temperature has come down a little bit over the last couple of months, and I appreciate that. And I think for the most part, we're talking about policies and ideas rather than people. And I'd like for us to continue doing that. Ms. Helfrich, we are aware of that lawsuit. When I got an email asking about it, I said, I am aware of it, but that's kind of the most I can say about it, right? And, you know, it's tricky to sit up here and not be able to say anything one way or the other. And so, I think we're hearing frustration is, is wondering, like, how is it helpful? Because I think if I, if I put my kind of assuming best intentions hat on, right? I think we want, like, if that information is out there, we want to make sure that it's out there, right? Or we want, we want to be able to say, it's out there and we know about it and we're taking care of it and we're dealing with it, right? And you want to be able to hear that from the board and from staff, right? And you want to be able to hear that in a public forum. And I understand that desire, right? And on the other hand, I understand Dr. Weisberg's feeling that it felt potentially like an attack on someone who is still an employee of the district or a couple of people, right? Because it is, because it's a filed case, it only has one side of the story in it, right? And so, I would just, that's, again, that's kind of all I can say about it, is that it is an allegation, right? It is a filed case, but it is an allegation. And so, we are aware of it. We're dealing with it. And I really did appreciate that where you went was, let's think about policies and ideas rather than about people, right? And that was what a lot of the comments were focused on today, right? Where how do we think about, how do we focus on where we go from here rather than who do we blame? Okay? And so, I said I wasn't going to talk, but then I still went and did it. Thank you for everybody coming out. And Vlad, I love the signs because I get so lost at Burbank High every time I go. So, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I think my colleagues have pretty much covered most of the areas. I do want to again thank, I do want to thank all the speakers coming forward and some individuals bringing some points. It is important that, you know, you come here and address us. I think, again, I've seen, you know, certain concerns that we can talk about, some others we can't. But again, we're always appreciative of individuals coming forward in a rainy day. But also, you know, I believe that Mr. Reiner, who is not here, but, you know, we know about the challenges. And we know what's happening right now and the attack on our education system. We have a system that's trying to dismantle the whole education, public education system on a federal level. It's disheartening to anyone who's in education. So, I will ask everyone here that maybe tomorrow you go and thank a teacher. There, it's difficult for them. I think my colleague covered all the areas. But, you know, sometimes when you're not there, you know, during the raids, you know, parents being scared, kids coming to school, guess who they talk to? To the teachers. The uncertainty about our public education system and what's happening in our country right now with this whole notion of dismantling the whole education system. Look at the, you know, hikes in UC systems now for tuition. Education is under attack, everyone. And it's not helping our community or our country. So, maybe tomorrow, maybe take a box of donuts to the teachers or some flowers or something. Because it's difficult to be a teacher. So, and we want to thank this, take this opportunity to thank all of our teachers for their hard work, including some of my colleagues. Last but not least, Mr. Vladimir Hovonisian, thank you. But I also want to acknowledge his father is here today. If you can please stand up. Without your support, Vlad will not be here and doing all of stuff. So, let's hear it for his father. And also next to him, Mr. Samvel Minasyan, now who's in college, who's also with Vlad all the time. And I say this because I get texts and calls from Vlad all the time. Samvel is now interning with me. He's studying business. And, you know, again, I also want to thank our parents because, because parents like Mr. Hovonisian allow their students, their children to be out there. And Mr. Hovonisian is not only doing this in Burbank. He is in our community, constantly helping us. I see him at events. I see him at, you know, after school and different events, just trying to be a good citizen of the world. And he's there with his friend, Mr. Minasyan. So, again, I think this is a great, you know, proof of our Burbank school system and what we've done, bringing forward the current and future leaders in our community who are not only doing stuff on campus, but are willing to be out there. I've seen them volunteer at events. I've seen them do stuff that are completely, you know. So, again, I want to thank you and I want to thank, you know, your parents. Yes, Mr. Macias.
Dr. Agakanyan, I appreciate your sentiment thanking a teacher. I want to expand that a little bit.
Yeah.
I want to thank our teachers in the spirit of gratitude and thanksgiving. It's not just everyone in the community. Thank a teacher. Thank a support staff member, CSEA, BTA, our administrators, our district officials. Everyone should be, they're a part of the system. We're grateful for the, what they do. But thank you for starting that off. I just wanted to include that.
Thank you. And I appreciate that. And I think we should do that every day. Sorry. Oh, and then, last but not least, Mr. Lippman, yes, thank you for the invitation. We'll be there. And I will tell you how much I love this program. Not only, how many events I've been to that our students who are in the stage program are running this, learning. So, it's not only saving also the district money for some of them doing this stuff, but they're also learning. And I'm not joking because you go into higher ed and stuff, they're going to have staff there. They're going to charge you a lot of money. So, the fact that these students are learning but also saving our district money, it's wonderful. And these are careers that, you know, no one talks about unless you start having success stories because it's kind of a niche area, right? So, it's wonderful. And I love this that the fact that we've seen solid students. I've been to many events who were there with their headphones, sometimes too big, but they have their headphone on and, you know, and starting young. So, thank you for, you know, all you do. But the career tech education and preparing these markets, especially in today's world with all the layoffs and AI taking over everything, it's very refreshing to see individuals and organizations who are out there really thinking outside the box. And this is something that's been happening for a long time. So, thank you very much. I'd be more than happy to attend your event and invitation. With that said, we're going to move to next item, new 12. No, sorry. 11 reports to the board. 11A was pulled. 11B, approval of revised district's five-year strategic arts plan. Dr. Knappich.
I would like to invite Peggy Flynn, who's going to do a presentation on the Arts for All Strategic Plan. Ms. Flynn, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, President Agakanyan and board members. I have to apologize from the start. I did not finish my PowerPoint in time to get it posted. So, I'm terrified right now because I'm very used to being able to have people distracted by the slides that I put together. So, forgive me and give me some kind of like, thank you. Pretend. I could hold it up. I can share it at a different time. But I'm very, very pleased to be here to share with you the updated Burbank Unified Strategic Arts Plan and to thank publicly the community arts team that we had, well, some of which who are here tonight. Just to give a little background, our strategic arts planning started in 2003. By 2004, we had a community arts team put together. We were invited by the then, the then, LA County Arts Commission. It's now known as the Department of Arts and Culture. That's, I've seen a few iterations in my time. That was 2003, 2004, 2005. The community arts team wrote the plan. I was teaching kindergarten at the time, but watching very closely because I was very interested in it. And in, I believe it was November 2005, the first plan was adopted by the board. And the first three goals that they had were to reinstate the elementary music program that had been cut in 1993. And this is now 2005 that we were talking about it. And it came about in 2007, to hire an arts teacher on special assignment, which I was fortunate enough to be at that point. And also to start an independent funding source, which was the Burbank Arts for All Foundation, which is now merged with BEF to form the Burbank Arts and Education Foundation. So, it's been a fun journey to watch it all go. The plan itself is not meant to be a prescriptive recipe type of strategic plan. It's supposed to be a roadmap of, that will help us and guide us as we make decisions as a district. I'm going to, at the, at the end, I'm going to share with you all the lessons that we've learned over the last 20 years. So, I won't get too deep into that. But it does help us prioritize, especially when there's no money. What we, the biggest lesson that we, well, there's many big lessons, but one of the biggest lessons that we learned was when, when there's no money, it's time to plan. Because as educators, we all know, money can fall from the sky at any time. And as, it cometh and it taketh away very rapidly. So, when we have a plan, when that money comes, we know what our next step is. We saw that happen months after the first plan was adopted when Arnold Schwarzenegger, our governor, issued a block grant for music and PE. And we were able to use those funds to build back the equipment we had lost, the, and the positions we had lost for elementary music. Without that, it could have been another 20 years before we were able to restore that. that, it could have been another 20 years before we were able to restore that, that program for our elementary kids. And that has a direct impact on our middle and our high school programs. So, that was a very important time. Some real key highlights in addition to starting the foundation and having a dedicated staff person to oversee the implementation. The board adopted its first policy on the arts that I've included and we have included in the plan. Let's see. We made a focused effort and started receiving funding to provide professional development for all our K-12 teachers in arts integration, because the easiest way to make sure you're addressing access for all students is to make sure you have a sustainable provider. One of the reasons we started with elementary music was because it was like learning another language. So, the practicality and the realistic thought that we could sustain a program that was taught by classroom teachers with many of which had had no arts training in their own education, because if they grew up in California post Prop 13, they did not have that kind of background. So, that's why we started with music education, because we knew that would take a specialized skillset. Theater, dance, and visual arts, we were able to create professional development and integrated curriculum that addressed many standards across the board, including social studies, science, math. Something I learned as a college student, which I wish I'd known when I was younger, was that it clicked in my head one day that, oh, art is like holding a mirror up to society at any given time. And when I would study and read the literature of the time and then study the artwork of the time and see the connection, it's something completely changed in me. And I began to understand and love that learning. And we've tried to impart the same now to our younger students. It's not an isolated academic area. It is connected everywhere. And it's one of the opportunities, whether it's music, dance, theater, film, any art form where kids are able to express themselves and be created, creative, is the one opportunity a day that they get to synthesize and take all the things they're learning in math and science and reading and so on, and bring that into this creative process. And it's been a lot of fun to help work with wonderful teachers throughout the district to get that done. This is actually the fourth community arts team that we have formed. We've done revisions. We've done updates. We've done complete overhauls. This particular plan, we were a little late in bringing it back because we had some other things going on in the district. But the last plan was a 10-year plan. It went from 2012 to 2022. This community arts team decided that the number of changes, both financially with leadership and teaching staff, we really needed to come together and review it more frequently than 10 years, especially now that we're in the era of Prop 28. To tackle a budget for this, I, to be honest, I didn't have the capacity to do it in the timeframe that we had. We wanted to make sure we got this plan to you before the exemplary arts applications are due in December. We can happily work on that budget later. But for now, we're still navigating Prop 28 and trying to figure out where these dollars are all going. We have a report due in December that we're working on. So, that will help yield some things. I know I got a board question earlier about where are we going to find the money for this? One of the biggest steps that we made and commitments that we made in 2005 was to increase district dedicated funding to the arts. Another one was to not disproportionately cut the arts. We understand that cuts have to be made. It's a hard reality. But a big lesson that we learned was if you completely eliminate a program or a position, we cut music in 1992, and it wasn't until 2007 that we could afford to bring it back. The minute that goes away, you have to rebuild and have, make sure you lock down those instruments and all those other things. So, I'm starting to, see, don't you wish I had a PowerPoint? Let's see. One nice outcome of our arts planning and our community-based support for it, when money came for career technical education from the state, we were ready. Because half of our plan to grow was based on our local economy. So, our arts, media, and entertainment, I don't know that we knew what we were doing at the time, but we definitely knew that we'd wanted to build skills sequentially. So, we developed the middle school digital media program so that kids were exposed to the Adobe suite and a few other programs that they would need if they were going to go into any of our AME programs in the high schools. So, that paid off big time, because that's become the heart of our CTE grants. I was also asked, who develops this plan? And that's a great question, because it takes the village, literally. I oversee. We were really fortunate that the LA County, I have to get used to saying it. I'm so used to saying the LA County Arts Commission. The LA County Department of Arts and Culture, as part of our advancement grant in 2024, gave us an option to request a facilitator-coach support. So, for the third time, we were really fortunate to be provided that assistance, because on my own, I don't know that it would have gotten done as nicely and as quickly as it did. So, thank you to Ms. Kimberly, Kimberly Arne. Raise your hand. She was our facilitator and coach and worked with me very closely. We met often. She and I met to plan our meetings and get ready for our community arts team. We had four three-hour meetings with the team. The community arts team for Burbank this time had 39 members. Not all come to every meeting. We're happy when they can make it. But they represented 13 stakeholder groups in the community, including, you know, business partners like Mr. Lippmann and Volt, parents, our city government was represented. Teachers and nonprofits all took part. And it was a really great, great experience for me, anyway. So, Volt, City of Burbank, Burbank Music Academy. I need to apologize to Louisa and Narnay from the Burbank Music Center, because they got left off my list in the plan. I need to revise it. They were amazing. Let's see. The mission and vision is very close to what we've had it be. It's every student in the Burbank Unified School District will have access to a high-quality, standards-based, sequential arts education. It's very important that it be sequential. We had, one of the lessons we learned was a supplemental program that was fundraised by one of our schools with excellent intentions, wanted every grade level to have some kind of an art experience. And so, they funded independently a weekly violin program for first grade. And then, at that time, we had only just started to implement our elementary music program with two teachers for 11 schools every other week in second through fifth. So, to have a violin program feed into a general music program every other week, that was not sequential. So, you'll see in the plan that we, at that point, developed some priorities in terms of if a school is going to raise money to go above and beyond, these are the orders that we would like to have it go in. Put it into fifth grade weekly music and so on and so on. Fortunately, with Prop 28, we've been able to have the elementary schools pool funds, which is a principal decision. And we've added four additional teachers to the elementary music program. So, we have weekly music right now in K-1, 2, 3, and 4, 5, with ukulele in the second semester. There are seven focus areas. Initially, in the very first plan we had, there were six. A few years into the plan, we realized with our community partners that we needed to have a communications and advocacy plan, including website and community meetings, and how were we going to get the word out that our programs were growing and in need? I think I could go on and on and on, but I'm going to stop there in case I missed anything. Did I miss anything good? Let me know if I can answer any questions for you.
Any questions? Dr. Weisberg.
First of all, thank you. Hi.
Hi.
There's a lot of like really super aspirational stuff in here, which is great to see. And so, I think I'm trying to sort of parse out from here, like, the aspirational elements versus sort of the measurable outcomes, because there's stuff in here that I would want immediately, like, right now, last week, 12 years ago. But to your point from the beginning, right, that we know we have serious funding. We know there are only certain things that we can use Prop 28 funding for. So, I wonder if you could talk a little bit about, in the next like one or two academic years, what are like our main sort of measurable outcomes that we're looking to achieve, without, you know, doing a disservice to all the things we hope to achieve?
Well, it's interesting, because now I'm going to go to my lessons we've learned.
I love it.
And I'm sorry, I'm going to, I will address your question, but I'm going to kind of go in order so I don't mess up. Big lesson we learned, equal is not always equity. No matter what the district was able to fund, there would always be community groups and schools that would fundraise and add more. However, where we used to have schools that had nothing provided, because there wasn't a big, robust fundraising community in them, we were able to, for the first time, provide a music program for those elementary schools. If we had tried and said, we need to provide and assure that nobody could add anything that was different, those schools that were less able to provide on their own would have never received the instruction and the exposure that they did. So, access is big. It doesn't have to look the same at every school. Our students don't look the same. Our teachers don't look the same. Everybody has individual needs. To make sure that every school, every student had access to visual performing and media arts was our goal. That paid off big time. When I first started this position, I went into the middle schools and kind of surveyed kids about what elementary schools they'd gone to. And it was Roosevelt, Bret Hart, the schools that fundraised to implement their own music program. Now, you'll go into those same classrooms and I do the same kind of survey, and there's an even distribution. Yeah. So, it's worked. Yay. I already talked about eliminating programs. Really, it's very difficult to bring it back, even a little bit. Strategic means ensuring sequential and sustainable. So, when you look at these goals, some of them are pretty visionary and lofty. We asked our team to please think in five years, what would our utopia be? And that's, we've done that all the way through. One of the most important things we have to consider when we're implementing a new program is, can it be sustained at least three to five years with what we have now? There has to be a sustainability plan. Otherwise, you're going to invest a lot of money into a program that fizzles out, and then you're starting from square one again. Much better to plan that path before you implement. Maintenance of repair is not a luxury item. It's very necessary. In 2005, the line item, budget item for instrument repair and replacement was cut in a budget crisis, eliminated. And by 2014, the need totaled more than 1.4 million. And we fundraised and we made a big dent, but it's hard to catch up from that. Now, in terms of, your question was, how do we approach these lofty goals and how do we measure that we've succeeded? Admittedly, there's going to be goals here that we will probably keep carrying forward until we're able to succeed. But you might be surprised, there were things that we've accomplished in the last 20 years that we never thought we could accomplish. One very big one that we just did this year was providing animation at John Burroughs High School. We tried once before. It lasted three years, but because it was heavily reliant on our relationship with our partner, community colleges. Now, we've got, I call him a unicorn. I keep teasing him, because he really is a unicorn. Trying to find somebody with, who qualifies for that credential, who isn't out there doing that job, is very difficult. We've got a great guy now. And one of the things that I love best about him is that he is, he's got background to help us expand our, our skills for our kids to address the changes that are happening in the entertainment industry and the medical industry and everything else. AI is going to be everywhere. And we can say whatever we want about it, but if we're not telling our kids what to do with it or how to harness it, we're doing them a big disservice. So, we are planning that. And that is in our arts grants, and it's also in our CTE grants. I feel like I'm still not answering your question. But we do, we used to have a great tool from the county that was very thorough. But they also paid for the analysis of it, and that's where it gets expensive. And they stopped doing that in 2012, 14?
Yeah, but that's actually been re.
Is it? Yay. So, that makes a huge difference. That is what led to the results of the data from that evaluation over, we did it three different times, was what I used to communicate in order to get the instruments and the music teachers and supplies and materials for visual arts teachers into LCAP. It's just such a great tool to help us. At that time, there were 16 indicators of a strong program. We, of the districts that were involved in the program at that point, I think we topped 15 of the 16 indicators. The indicator that we were at the bottom for was fiscal commitment, ironically. But that tells you the strength of our community and how passionate they are about the arts, because if it wasn't for them, they really carried it forward.
It's not late enough for me to be Dr. Kamkar yet. So, I think, let me try asking Dr. Weisberg's question a different way. Or maybe, and maybe I'm not even restating it, but we'll try. Because I think, I think it makes sense that, because you've got success indicators in here, and I understand why they're not quantitative, but usually that's what we would look for. But I think one of the things that I'm, was looking at when I was looking through this was, what are some of the near-term things in this that have to be done in order to make this plan succeed, right? So, if I'm looking at Focus Area 3, which is Program Administration, Scheduling, and Personnel, there's Restore the VAPATOSA Position. So, I need to understand, now, I know budget is like the next phase of this, but is restoring the VAPATOSA Position the only way to get the other six things with each having, you know, seven subpoints under them done on this whole focus area list?
I don't want to say it's the only way, but it would be the most effective way. Because even in developing this updated plan, I really missed having that TOSA. I'm not able to.
Right. So, I guess that's an example, right? So, what is, what are the things that need to, in your mind, right, on here, the kind of implementation tasks that would need to happen over the next year or two that are hypercritical for this plan to succeed?
We actually have. We actually have our next meeting with our community arts team to determine that, what our recommendations to you would be. A few years back, in 2017, we did, and I, I'm not encouraging this, because we have other issues now, but we did a deep dive. The board requested a board study and we, we went really deep into costs and to, not just costs, but you need facilities, you need teachers, you need, you know, there's a lot that goes into it. You need room in your master scheduling. There's a lot of details that once you start to implement each goal, they, they come up where you might not even know they existed before. So I, I'm happy to bring that recommendation back to you, but I really, I do not want to tell you right now today, here's what we have to do today, because I don't know what we're really able to do yet. Right now, I'm hoping to maintain what we have going until we're in a better position to grow again. I'm hoping for, we're going to continue to write grants and work with community members. Like I said, sometimes things just come out of nowhere. We have an opportunity with a tech company right now that is going to be, and I'll bring this to you later, but they're interested in working with us to prototype something that we use for animation. Those kinds of things, we can't really anticipate until it comes up. We'll get, we'll get funding from a generous donor that we have that we weren't expecting and that can help too. I don't want to put too much emphasis on any one goal right now until we, we really look through and deep dive into the costs.
I fully understand that. I would just say that I think that that prioritization, especially as you're thinking about money falling into your lap and potentially having a generous donor say, hey, I have $100,000 to put towards your arts education, but I want to spend it on this thing over here. I want you to be.
Well, and that happens.
But, and, but I want you to be armed with the, the data to say, actually, the thing that's really hypercritical for our entire arts plan is actually this thing instead. So can I convince you to instead spend that money over here today?
Which I've done.
Yeah, which I believe that you absolutely could do, but you need to have the.
Right.
The plan to do it, right?
And I don't know that, that I feel ready to do that just yet, until, until we do that dive, so thank you.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to commend because, yeah, like you were saying, this is so broad and big and there's so many, you know, what ifs. And this is, as you said, very much like a roadmap, a North Star. But as somebody, again, who's coming in with a solid arts background, I went to performing arts high school and interdisciplinary and sequential arts programming is like, I'm in you with, I'm in that with you. This is, I think, a really solid way to see all of the different interworking pieces that you have going on right now. It's a good reflection of that. But a little bit toward what they were saying too is, I would love that follow-up because I see that you can't yet, but as you get closer, and one of my questions was, for a bit of a like representation visually of where are your gaps and what are the priorities for that, in an effort for all of us to voice that to the community and the world and our network, so I can say, oh, hey, you mentioned you have some money you want to spend, but look at this great strategic plan that has, this is the priority, because attaching a narrative of, kids need this because they can't take that next sequential class in animation, because we don't have the resources to prepare them for it. So I know, I get why you are chasing it, but I'm also chasing the narrative so that we can echo the importance of this.
That speaks also to how there's crossover, so digital literacy.
Yes, yeah, and it's, you have to start it young too.
And that crosses over with the arts. So we've been starting that as we can, trying to partner a lot to get free training for our teachers and some not so free training. But yeah, I'm, I'm with you and as soon as I'm able to do that, I will absolutely, but what I would suggest is, I can make recommendations and then we could go through it together and then you decide, all right, these are going to be our priorities. Because Armand, I think, I'm sorry, Dr. Aga Khanian, I think you were on the board when we, when we did the three-year priority plan. Yeah, and that was, that was kind of great, you know, to be able to really unpack what it takes to put a program into a school. Because sometimes I, I meet with a principal and I hear, I learned something that I did not know, like we can't use that classroom anymore, or, you know, things like that. So I think it helps to have that time to do the deep dive.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please do reach out if you have any questions. I'll do my best.
Actually, do we need to be, this is under reports, but do we need to approve this?
Yes. I don't know if it was a ratification or an approved.
It says approval, but it's under reports.
So technically, since it was under report and it's not new and unfinished business, we can't take action on that. So we'll have to bring it back under new and unfinished business as an approval.
Yeah, that's because the word approval of revised.
But it is, agendizes approval.
Right. But under reports. So I.
The plan.
But does it prevent you from doing anything?
I needed to have you see it before I can tell principals they can refer to it in their applications.
But we've seen it.
Okay, everyone, so we've seen it, if you want to.
Again, I'm going to make the recommendation since how it was presented, how it was shared out publicly, I don't want to have a Brown Act violation on us.
I can come back.
I'm going to make the recommendation that you saw the report. Peggy will be able to share with our principals. They can move forward on that, but we'll make sure that it's agendized properly and on the December 11th meeting and then a formal approval can take place then.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yep, that's fine with me.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
And thank you very much.
Thank you for your support, because without the support of the board, we wouldn't be able to have progressed, so.
Thank you. To have new and, and or unfinished business, first reading of proposal revisions of bond policy 0410, non-discrimination in district programs and activities, Dr. Knappick.
This is a first reading on proposed board policy 0410, non-discrimination in district programs and activities. So within the proposed policy, the bold language is added as new language taken from the California School Boards Association and the crossed out language reflects those deletions from, once again, the California School Boards Association template policy. This policy addresses materials and all activities that it is our practice to remain discriminatory free. We notify all of our employees of this policy. Dr. Macias has already alluded to this policy in a previous email and so we do include this also in our annual notifications to families too. So once again, this is a first reading.
All right. Any questions? Can I get a motion and a second, please?
First reading.
Oh, we don't. I am sorry.
I just have one question, I'm so sorry. You mentioned the update goes out to families at like the top of the year. Will that be the case for all of these or all of these kind of amendments?
Only the ones that are required to go ahead and notify families about and staff about.
Got it, okay. So there is.
In our annual notifications. Otherwise, we'd have.
I was going to say, that's kind of what I was wondering.
And to further expand on that, we get guidance from our Los Angeles County Office of Education that put out the requirements and updates that we're mandated to put out.
Yep. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Knappick. 12B, first reading of proposed revisions to the Board Policy and Administration Regulations 4030, non-discrimination employment, Dr. Knappick.
And this is a first reading on board policy and administrative regulation 4030, non-discrimination in employment. So the school district requires, portrays and requires a safe and inclusive workplace that is discriminatory free, that is harassment free, and that when issues are brought to our attention, my attention in particular, then we investigate and we follow investigatory procedures within the laws. Once again, we follow California School Board Association template policy, bold language is additional language, cross out language is the recommended deletions from the California School Board Association.
I have two quick questions. This is not new language, this is existing language. District shall not inquire into any employee's immigration status nor discriminate against any employee, et cetera, et cetera, unless there is clear and convincing evidence that the district is required to do so in order to comply with federal immigration law. I guess I'm anxious about that, I would say. One, you know, think, thinking Governor Newsom, we certainly have some new guidelines statewide, but I, I guess I would wonder what the clear and convincing evidence that we're required to do so, like, I don't know if we need to add something. I mean, this is very much a of the moment concern. I think in previous years, I would not have been concerned.
So recent activities within the state in regard to education code, recent activities and adoptions from the federal perspective too, probably are not totally reflected in this revision, because they're so recent, it has to go through the California School Board Association and then they're going to give us an update, probably like every quarter they give us an update. And so I, I go through it and I'll identify it and then bring it back to the board as a revision.
Do you, so, great. I guess I feel a little bit more sense of urgency in this particular moment, that I wonder if we, when, when CSBA does give us the language, let's put it in, but I think if the board is amenable to it, I would love to have some language at the December 11th meeting that we can add into here, as even if it's just a placeholder, I just don't want anyone to be able to use this policy against.
Absolutely.
People within the district.
And one of the bonuses too, upcoming is the CSBA conference. And so I would guess that at that conference, they're going to go ahead and share some draft policy.
I hope so.
And draft language. I bet they will.
Fingers crossed.
Yes.
And then the only other question I had was the new language about cannabis. So is the same language anywhere in regards to alcohol?
I would have to do some research on that.
Okay. I'm just curious in regards to possessing being, the, the being impaired by, of course, using cannabis on the job, of course, but I wonder about like the possession of cannabis, is it the same as the possession of alcohol? Like what?
And since this is a first reading, that would give me time to go ahead and do that research and come back to you on December 11th with that information.
Awesome. Those are my two questions. Thank you, sir.
Perfect. Thank you.
I just had a noticing on the second page, that the language has changed from encouraged to shall report such incidents, that if an employee has observed, who observes or had its knowledge of a, an incident of sexual harassment, discrimination, retaliation, et cetera, shall report, right? So does that change the training that we'll be doing? Does that, does that require employees to report it?
The expectation is for employees to report it. So on December 2nd, we're having training on uniform complaint procedures, which this information will cover.
And would an employee be disciplined if they did not report an incident that they observed?
That is going to be heavily dependent on more guidance and working with our union groups and actual contractual.
Okay. So it's, it's shall, but not must?
Correct.
Got it. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, and Dr. Knappick, we don't have to vote on this either. Oh, you, oh, Ms. Khan.
Just on, on what Abby just said, in terms of that, I'm thinking in terms of, you know, with all the, the new laws in terms of from past with lawsuits and stuff, so, I'm not sure where I'm going on this. I was like, I made a really good, I made such a good connection up here.
It'll come. 12C, approval of memorandum of understanding between the International Rescue Committee Inc. and the Burbank Unified School District from November 21, 2025 through June 38, 2026, Dr. Knappick.
And I would like to invite Narini Barzegar, our Director of Student Services, who is going to share about this agreement with the International Rescue Committee, the Sparks Program.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So this MOU between the International Rescue Committee and the Burbank Unified School District is to run a program called SPARKS, which stands for Structured Psychotherapy for Adolescents Responding to Chronic Stress. The IRC out of the Glendale office reached out to offer this program because they have secured a new grant to offer this, so it's at no cost to us. So SPARKS is designed to be a group intervention, designed for students, there's a small edit, ages 12 to 17, not K-12, who may be experiencing chronic stress or adversity. The program is led by licensed psychologists. It is intended to be a group session and they can run them in Spanish, Farsi and Russian and Ukrainian for students who especially have experienced, they said in our Zoom meeting with them, trauma coming from other countries. And so we can decide if we want to run one at one site, one at another site, kind of depending on the demographics and population. The program provides supportive environment where participants can build resilience, strengthen emotional regulation, develop problem-solving skills and foster healthier relationship. The goal is to teach participants coping strategies, emotional regulation and better relationships. So again, it's a grant that they have secured, so we would be working with them to establish this on our terms. And so we would decide where we want to host it, what the hours will be, and to ensure that it's closed just to our students, that there aren't other students from like the community who might not be part of BUSD coming in. And it's for the students, not adults, as far as I understand, their parents and stuff are not going to be coming into the sessions. And they're going to do, they'll collect data, but it wouldn't be data that identifies anyone. It would kind of be like surveys to the group to see how their, if they've met their goals and what their feedback would be and they were clear about following HIPAA violations and FERPA, just so that their private information is not shared or collected in any way.
Yes, Vice President Kamkar.
The agreement's only through the end of this school year? Is that just to sort out the logistics of the program and then they would provide it in the next school year or are they already going to be providing services in this school year?
They said they secured a grant and we were one of the first schools that they had reached out to, so there really wasn't anything to kind of lean back on, because one of the questions I asked was, is this happening anywhere else? And they said, no, we just secured this grant. And so it is a grant-funded program, so that's really going to depend on if their grant is carried on and if they're able to provide it. And if we choose to carry this forward with them, then we can cross that bridge when we get there.
But when would this care start? Like, when would the therapy sessions start?
They were ready to start earlier, but because we needed to go through, talking through, collecting the details, putting this MOU together and presenting it to the board, so they have the people and the structure ready to go. So they will begin as soon as we give them the green light to go, but we need to figure out the logistics. So we want to make sure that we take the time to really plan it with them and talk to the site leadership to see what that looks like and go from there.
Dr. Weisberg.
I think it'd be really helpful to, once you've figured out those logistics, I, I would love to hear about how we're going to do that, because I do, I am, the questions that I wrote down had to do with like, how are we going to identify students who want to participate in this? I do also want to be really clear that we get language and that there's no immigration information being shared. But yeah, and then also just what kind of summative info are we going to get at the end to sort of learn? And again, I'm not interested in anything confidential, but I do think it's, you know, as we do our, our mental health audit this year, this is going to be a really invaluable sort of surprise extra piece of information that we're going to be able to include in this, which is, you know, we have so many students coming in from war-torn countries and, you know, that is an area that I think we have long struggled to address and part of that's a language barrier. So this, I think, will end up being really, really valuable for us and a really lovely addition to the other work that we're doing. So I think I'm hungry to know who we work with and how it goes and would just love to hear back from you about like, once you've figured out those, the logistics of talking to site leadership and identifying students, I'd just love to hear back about that.
Oh, absolutely. They've, they've been really open to dialogue. We were able to hop on a Zoom with them. They even had one of their therapists join because we wanted to make sure that the folks in the room with the students were licensed therapists and they are, and that was really important to us.
That's huge. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Khan.
My.
My, two, number one, in terms of, so, we know, we've, do we have any data or any type of information in terms of what their success and what does success look like when we're talking about something like this? The other question is, how long does it take to really see results? Because we're talking, really, I mean, by the time what we're saying, all the logistics that we didn't go in, it doesn't sound like it would start until, you know, the beginning of 2026, and we're, that means January, that's January till, you know, May, that's like five months. Do, you know what I'm?
Yeah, and again, when we, when they first approached us about it, which was this school year, and we asked them about if they're in any other districts and what it looks like, they shared that, again, this is a new grant that they had just secured, so there wasn't, you know, anything to kind of lean back on and say, this is what it looks like. However, they are an established group, and so I think when we talk about success in these cases, it's not like a measurable goal that we might necessarily look at, because every child is starting from a different place. It's really going to be about what they report as far as their levels, like, questions, I'm thinking, might be like levels of anxiety or coping strategies or feeling connected to the campus and things like that. So, they would do kind of a post, like a pre-entry survey and a post, I'd imagine that's what something could look like.
I guess my just, my concern was that these are children who have experienced trauma, and then we give them this, you know, I don't, like I say, I don't know how long it takes, but if we just give you five months, they go, oh, grant's over, sorry, we're, you're not going to get this. That idea of them becoming attached to something and then, you know, bringing another little trauma along, so, I don't know. That was my concern on that.
I understand. Their initial proposal was for 16 weeks, so, in theory, that could be done if we start in January, because we do have 16 weeks. They, again, they were ready to get started sooner, but we wanted to make sure that we went through the process, that we had an MOU, that we talked about it, and we had approval before moving forward. And so we could go back to them, if we are good to go and the MOU is approved, to say, what's realistic? How could we get started? But again, to Dr. Weisberg's point, we want to be strategic in how we go about messaging it, what the plan is, what that looks like, before we just dive into advertising something to our students and saying, you know, come and present yourself and join this group.
I have a question, too.
Sure.
Because on that front, usually when you have a grant and you want it to come back, you're looking for kind of evidence for its success, so I'd be curious to see if there was anything built in on how they wanted to kind of measure and share that success. I'm so excited that they picked us to come first, and I want them to do that again. So, yeah, I guess I'd be curious to hear from you in the future if there's anything that they're looking for and able to, in order to validate that we were a good and strong recipient of this and how we can get it, like you said, to keep coming.
And that's something I can take back to them and see, like I said, they've been really open to dialogue and connecting, and so I can ask them, what does this actually look like? But I think as we, as we first heard about it, we could all agree that there was a need, like being at Burbank High School for the past seven years, I know there was kind of an influx coming from certain areas that were really looking for connectedness on campus, and something like this, there was a need for.
I mean, look, for everyone, clarification, you know, grants, you know, they can cut them, and, you know, it depends on the funding, but at the same time, I think, let's get this thing going and then figure it out, because again, some grants could get caught, even if we have the most wonderful program, the most wonderful pre-work and everything else, but this is at least something that at least we can get kind of a time measurement based on the money and how long it would be for.
I think everybody's in agreement that we should do it, but I think it isn't, these questions are really important, and it's, I mean, it sounds like Ms. Barzegar is going to take, that we've provided some helpful feedback for her to take to the IRC and then provide us, so I think we're all excited about it, but I, these are, I think, what Ms. Kano was asking, too, about the sustainability is important, so I'm glad that we're, I'm glad that we're generating these sort of questions to puzzle out.
The language, as you said, I didn't hear Armenian.
They didn't say that they had, because the therapists themselves are bilingual, and so the therapists that they have are bilingual in Russian, Ukrainian, and Farsi and Spanish, and those were the ones that they had available to offer.
Okay. For now, okay.
For now, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Can I get a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second?
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And next, we have approval of professional service agreement, West Group Designs Girl Softball Field, and the Parking Improvement Architects of Record, Burbank High School Measure ABC Bond.
Thank you, Dr. Kano, and so we do have before you two agenda items that are roughly, well, directly about softball fields and parking. The softball fields for both high schools are a direct result of a Title IX resolution that was set forth, and we do have plans to fulfill. We went through a process during the summer and the better part of last year of fielding architectural firms that did apply. I know Board Member Kano was a part of this discussion as well, our Director of Facilities, and our bond managers. This is a vetting process, and these, this selected firm is the firm that was selected to begin the process of designing both schools and softball fields and parking structures. Real important to note that each school will undergo a process of gathering feedback from the community, the appropriate athletic departments for softball situations, the community in terms of the impact, so it's going to be a lengthy process, and this is part of the contract for each school, that they will be hosting, gathering information, and gather all the information necessary to have a final design in place that will then be presented to you as a board.
Yeah, of course.
I know that we should probably have a discussion about this and not a formal approval, because with the recent creation of the SFOC for bond measure ABC, that I think it's appropriate for you all to have a discussion about that, ask questions. I'm going to ask our Director of Facilities to fill in, just in case I miss a question or an answer to a question, but we don't formally vote on this until next board meeting and allow the SFOC to meet again.
Sure. No, 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 go ahead. I'll go after Vice President Ponser Kamker.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think, I attended the first SFOC meeting, they asked some really great questions. I think we, we made a promise to them that they had not seen anything that had been approved, or that the board had not approved anything other than the roofs.
Right. Yes.
And the tech projects, and so I think it's important that we keep that word with them, and so I want them to be able to take a look at these contracts. Now, I think these, I think the committee did a great job of vetting architects. These look great. I think there's also probably a discussion to be had about how the Division of State Architects kind of controls how architecture funding goes through these state projects, because there's a formula involved there, but I did, I had talked to Dr. Macias about this earlier this week, that I would prefer that we just discuss these projects, and we can even put it on consent next time, honestly, because I want to make sure that they have a chance to take a look and give us feedback and have a chance to weigh in.
I agree completely, and I just had two clarifying questions. Whoever wants to answer them. So, this is two different firms for each, one for one site and one for the other site, unless I'm misreading that, correct? Dr. Maxwell.
Good evening, President, members of the board. You are correct.
Okay.
So, yeah, one per site that was selected.
My other question is, the difference in cost, is that because that Burrows is getting parking and Burbank is not, or just the cost of?
I can't remember the exact plans. There's one that's much more complex, and I can't recall which one it is, but there's a lot of ideas.
Yeah.
There's no formal finished plan here.
Right.
This is just going to be all the ideas.
Yeah, Burrows is much more complex.
That was my assumption.
Because of the possibilities and limited space.
And I, and you alluded to this a minute ago, but I do want to make sure that part of the conversation, when we reach out to the community is that, and I assume this is, this is a stupid statement to make, but that we are talking to our coaches, we are talking, you know, like.
Neighbors, stakeholders, everyone.
Yeah, I mean, even, yeah, the debate, you know, the debate about turf field or grass field, and like, I don't want that to be made tip-top, I want them to be able to weigh in on that.
100%, and I, and I want to explicitly say this to both athletic departments right now at Burbank High School and John Burroughs High School, because there might be some awareness, obviously, that this was on the board agenda. It's not going to be slowed down, this is not going to impact us in terms of timelines, because it is going to be a very lengthy process to do. It sounds like we're not going to stand in the way of it. I don't want our softball coaches specifically to freak out, this is a project or two projects that are definitely going to be taken on and completed.
Yes.
Just a little delayed, but just for one board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. That was all I had.
10,000-foot overview tonight.
Exactly. I just wanted to make sure I was looking at it the right, from the 10,000 feet.
Thank you all.
That is two schools.
Any other questions from my colleagues? Sounds assuming 12D and 12E are the same date.
Well, yeah. 12D and 12E, so I'd like to move those to the next meeting.
So, why would it go after D?
At 12F then, ratification of agreement for professional services and HR.
Yes. So, this is a ratification, because this contract first started in 2022, and I know there were some questions about a name attached to the original contract. So, again, it is a ratification. This was never formally approved as a board item back then, so Dr. Abdallah Meed has some more information to that as well.
Yeah, I just want to add, this was pulled a couple months ago, I believe, and then we reached out to the vendor, and they gave us a lot of slack, because I asked them to recreate a five-year agreement with my name on it, and they would not, and it became a, it became a back and forth, and so I think we've really, because this technically has been in place already, it just never got sent to the board in 2022, so it really is a ratification.
And really important to note, despite a name that exists right now, they are in direct contact, they know, are points of contact currently, so we're good to go in that sense.
First of all, thank you for your efforts on trying to, I can only imagine. I just, I just have to say that specifically for this service, so, and just for the public's knowledge, like, I asked because this is about sending out snail mail in, like, in active, quick, you know, efficient ways, but I do want to address that I do think that, like, as we're seeing postal services increase, and we're seeing just that being such a, just a money gouger into the future, like, there's a way for us to move progressively out of sending so many things in this way, as, especially if something like this is going to become more expensive. So, I'd love to explore how we can maybe, knowing that we're in the middle of this contract, but not at the beginning of a five-year, how can we explore an exit strategy for the next couple of years of, how do we make report cards more accessible digitally and some of the things that we do more digital forward? Because there are ways to have people opt out of it, and have ways to them still receive the paper copy that they want, but I've worked with many districts where it's like, hey, as part of the initial, like, onboarding and, onboarding, as initially, like, signing up and enrolling a student, it's like, hey, all of these things will come digitally, if you don't want them this way, check here, kind of the thing, so that we can kind of avoid things like this in the future. I don't really know where we can begin with that, but do you know where in this contract, it was, ends in 2027? I don't know. I mean, gut-check me, is two years as a plan for something like that reasonable, or do we feel like that's something that would bring more friction? That's honestly just a discussion point.
I think we would need, I would need to know what we mail out, you know? Like, I don't even know what it is that we mail out.
And I suppose I said that because I asked, and I was like, this is mostly because of report cards, but correct me if I'm wrong.
So, for instance, our team uses it to send checks to vendors, and I would love for the two-year plan to be every vendor is on an auto pay.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Or at least an ACH, sorry, not autopay.
And payroll, and payroll, and payroll. Just throw it out there.
It may be.
Did you say autopay or ACH? No, thank you.
For the record.
But yes, I think every department should almost kind of come up with that list of what are they sending out, because I think, I can't speak for instructional services to say their two years would suffice, honestly, because that's a lot of communication with parents and just the tech gap, and so I would say from a fiscal side, it'd be great.
Yeah.
But I can only speak for those sort of.
So, Board Member Olson, why don't you, why don't we kind of look into this? Because again, for me also, it's like, you know, when you sign up now, you have the option, do you want to save paper and the environment? Do you want to receive everyone digital? You press that box, and you don't get junk, and I think also the impact on the environment, it's important. So, it's, maybe that's, we can also add that option as new parents, or something to add it later where you can opt that, because I would rather get this stuff, at least report cards from our son and do the show, I don't care about the paper stuff.
Well, I think that's why we have to get a sense of what it is that we're utilizing, for each department is using it for.
Are you volunteering to look into this?
Happy to, yes.
Thank you.
I will, I will work with Dr. Macias on kind of a, where does this reach? Is that the right thing to do?
District staff.
Yeah, because I can't do anything, but.
I, no, I just, it's our responsibility.
Yeah.
We'll take care of that. Two years, we can develop, obviously, kind of assess where we're at. I also want to just make sure that moving forward, when we're doing this, we're also checking legal requirements and also equity. I, by all, by all means, yes, a lot of us are heavily reliant and prefer digital formats, we still have a segment of our population that is not, and I really want to point out that our, I don't want to make assumptions one way or the other, but my experience is that our newcomer population aren't the most tech-savvy right away and accessibility is a major thing, so I just want to make sure that we're comprehensive in our approach with that.
Well, I definitely would want to consider all that, but that's also kind of the, I think runway is a perfect, a perfect plan, so, we'll follow through on that, but I just needed to use this as an example of a way to get moving on that.
I will just say, one of the only pieces of mail that I continue to receive is the copy of my district.
Same, same.
Board member pay, even though I have ACH. So moved.
Why don't I? No, I'm saying, I, never mind.
I'm always like, ooh, mail, and then I'm like, oh, it's just that. So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, aye.
We don't blame you.
12G, ratification of agreement for professional services?
What?
I, okay, so, my noticing on this one was that they're increasing the fee by 68% at the start of the new year, which is large, but also are not to exceed spend, did not increase, so I was just kind of curious as to if we think that this is a sustainable contract. I could have read it wrong, but.
Yeah.
This is for limerick, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
It's based on current data that we know within our employees, and, yeah, currently, right now, it's two employees, so it is an adjustment on their part, and that's why it's a ratification. We don't expect to exceed, but if we have to adjust, then we'll have to adjust.
Okay. I guess my second follow-up to that was, because this is a renew, this is a revisited quote, I, my concern is that, you know, with a 68% increase, is there other services that could provide it, or can we maybe not enter into a new contract until we've maybe evaluated that? Because I, as a mother, young mother, I know how valuable and important and imperative these services are, completely, but just again, I want to make sure that we're figuring out something sustainable so that we can continue this and not have to cut it.
Agreed.
Yeah.
We'll explore that.
Yeah, I probably will not approve this one. I don't know if that's something we share, is that, I can share that upfront, right? Yeah, okay.
Agreed.
Yeah.
We'll explore that.
Yeah, I, I probably will not approve this one. I don't know if that's something we share. Is that, I can share that upfront, right? Yeah, okay. Right now, I was just, I, I just just wanted to let everyone know where I stood before we continue to have comment. Yeah.
You can. It is a ratification, so we're paying for it anyway. So. But noted, is I guess what I would say.
Yeah.
Support. So moved.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. 12 H, did we pull this one? No, which one? Approval of replacement of automated external defibrillator as amended. Units and services agreement with AED authority as amended.
Yes, and just to clarify, the amendment was just because this was, it's been a couple of months in the making and we had a quote that had expired. And so we just updated the quote. But the actual cost did not change on the quote. We just needed a quote that said valid within 30 days of receiving. But yes, this is for 30 new devices for defibrillators. And so this is our current inventory. There's about 30 of them that they're, the model is discontinued. And so in order to be compliant just with inspections and maintenance, we need to replace 30 of them. And so we're using Medi-Cal funds and we're, they actually have a rebate program. So the total cost was initially going to be 69,000. And they're assuming that if we send 30 back to them, if they're working, even if they're discontinued, they'll give us a small rebate. And so we're hoping that it won't exceed 62,000, but we think it would be closer to 57,000. But we just buffered in because we really don't know how many are going to come back as they're working still from their perspective. But yes, it has two components. So the 62,000 is for the actual kind of goods. And then 15,000 is an annual fee in relation, in relation to the maintenance and inspection. And they, they do have to be inspected annually. And this is for all of the units, not just the new 30. Sorry, it's Medi-Cal funds. And so that's actually funding that we get reimbursed from the state. And so we're, we kind of meet collaboratively with special ed and health services and fiscal to talk through, how can we use these funds? And so our head nurse, Lenora, kind of has worked through the last few months of making sure that we can use these funds and we can.
And so will they, will they, in terms of Medicare, pay then for the ongoing? Because like every year we have to have the, they'll pay for that then too?
We have a pretty healthy fund balance specifically in Medi-Cal. So likely the next few years, it will be funded that same way. Yes.
Any question? Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved as amended.
Second as amended.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. 12, aye.
We got rid of it.
That was pulled.
That was pulled. 12 J, second reading and approval of proposed revisions of two board policy and administration regulation 35A. 3580 district records and 5125 student records. Questions on this?
My question would just be is what's, I know we talked about this for a bit at the last meeting. Is there, are there substantive changes? I mean, I read through it and didn't see any, but I want to make sure I didn't miss it.
The real substantive change in the policy, we've laid out a schedule of records retention.
Yes. Okay.
So all of our accounting records, budget, environmental, water flushes, et cetera. We listed out how many years we're going to be retaining all these records.
And nothing changed between first reading and tonight's second reading?
Correct.
Thank you for that. Any other questions?
I think there was one question about just where were we keeping the permanent records?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, where are we keeping the permanent records?
Surprise, my garage.
Under Dr. Knappik's bed or somewhere else?
Then what's in my garage?
Is that a question?
No, where are we keeping the permanent records?
Where are we keeping the records?
They're at various locations right now. So we're, we're always going to explore a different, more efficient way. Some of our permanent records, obviously at school sites, but district we have depending on offices and whatnot. That's how it's layered out.
But we're clear on where the permanent records are. You know.
Correct.
You know where to find them.
Okay. Good. Are we going to have a little egg hunting?
No, they know.
We know.
Okay. All right. Motion in a second, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
12 K, second reading and approval of proposed revisions to board policy and admin regulations 5145.7 Sexual Arrestment.
This is a request for approval for the adoption of board policy and regulation 5145.7 Sexual Arrestment. There was no changes from the first reading.
Yep.
Yes. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Second reading, a reading and approval of proposed regulations to administer regulation 4119.12, Dr. Knappik.
Once again, this is a second reading and approval for administrative regulation 4119.12 Title IX Sexual Arrestment. There was no changes in the first reading. And just an aside that our administrative team, our principals and our cabinet members are all being trained on these policies. And that started a couple of weeks ago on Title IX procedures, investigatory procedures, UCP procedures. So this is all part and parcel provided by our attorneys. Yeah.
By the way, do we use a, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Is there a company or a site that we use? Because I, I, at my work, I have, there's like an external, you go and the videos, or is it all internal in-house?
All of these trainings are in person.
Oh.
With our attorneys.
As part of this, I know we were updating the information on the webpage around Title IX. Has that all been completed?
Yes, all completed. And that was something that was done and completed. And when we shared out in E-News, it absolutely corresponded to actual information and our links and website correspond. And language here on these revisions and second readings updated like Dr. Knappik has the point of contact for our Title IX situations. So yes, more than updated.
So once these policies and administrative regulations are all approved, they're going to be uploaded onto the website, which has all been redesigned.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question, because I just went through all of the trainings, the digital ones. Do we update those as well? Or is that something that those providers do for us? And how, when does that usually update?
The providers provide that information annually.
Okay.
So August and July is when we get the refreshers. Yeah.
That's great.
Any other questions? Got a motion second, please?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. 12 F, second reading or approval of proposed revisions to board policy and admin regulations 1312.3 Uniform Compliant Procedures, Dr. Knappik.
And this is a second reading approval for their uniform complaint procedures. Our point people for those will be Julie Marcusson for secondary education, Dr. Harris for elementary education. And so depending upon what kind of complaint it is to, it may go to somebody else. But those are the primary people.
You're saying after it is sent to Dr. Harris or Ms. Marcusson, it would go then? But they are the point of kind of triage essentially. Got it.
Or me.
Or you. Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions other than that, Dr. Weisberg? All right, can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved. A second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion, aye. Motion passes unanimously. 12 N, call for nomination of, of candidate to the California School Board Association for Delegate Assembly for 2026-2028, Subregion 23A. Dr. Macias.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Just as you stated, the CSBA seeking nomination and appointments for its delegate assemblies for the term 2026 through 2028. The assemblies are vital component of the governance structure within the CSBA. It's highly encouraged that someone get nominated or appointed. And that is at the discretion of this board to put that through.
Okay. Can I get a nomination, please?
So I would like to nominate Dr. Weisberg. I believe we as a board tried to nominate her the previous year, but we had a snafu with getting our paperwork in on time. So we, I would love to nominate her for, for the upcoming year for delegates to the CSBA.
I second that and make sure we don't have a snafu this time.
That we're doing it bright and early. As soon as it came through, I sent it to Ms. Ceterio.
Yeah. I'll second it with a, with a no snafu. All right.
Do you accept Dr. Weisberg?
Yes, I do.
With no snafu. It actually rhymes, actually. All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yay.
Congratulations, Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. 12 O, consideration of establishing a budget advisory committee or fiscal review committee. Yes, Dr. Dr. Macias, long awaited, and here it is.
Yes, we've actually have had budget advisory committees in existence before in Burbank Unified. I would very much like to recommend, highly recommend that we consider reforming this group. It should be an annual group that meets, not just in light of possible fiscal crisis. This should be a sustainable group that meets consistently. So highly advise that strong consideration given to that. I'm looking forward to the discussion and then hopefully the direction to get the green light to get this formed.
We can hear you. Yes.
When was the last time they had the budget advisory committee?
I want to say it was before COVID, my understanding.
Dr. Weisberg.
I mean, I just wanted to quickly thank Vice President Ponser Kamkar for sort of steering us this direction. And also the community members who have brought it up as well. But I'm excited to listen into this conversation and I'm excited to establish this committee. I think it's much needed.
All right. Are you ready for my thoughts? Okay, so here's the thing. So among us, we have asked for a couple of different things. And so I, I put some discussion questions in the agenda item because I think there's, there are some discussion items, but I think initially there's, there are two committees we've essentially asked for. There's a budget advisory committee, which is really about like, how are we spending our money? And then there's also this potential fiscal review committee, which is really more about like processes and potentially like supporting kind of this idea of like, are we looking at the right things? And helping support almost like, supporting almost like an audit of, of our processes internally, right? And that might be looking at our internal controls or, you know, looking at something very specific. Like when we have folks who look at, here are all of our warrants that go out. And I want to understand, like, are these all proper warrants, right? Or I want to understand why the POs are written this way, right? And being able to understand how a PO gets written and explained to the public. For example, that might be a deliverable of a fiscal review committee of being able to explain to the public in very plain language of, here is the, like a Schoolhouse Rock style, here is the journey of a, a board-approved item to a check that gets mailed out to a vendor, right? Now, the budget advisory committee is much more 10,000-foot level. So let me present to you this really exciting looking book called School Budgeting for Hard Times by William K. Poston Jr. So our friends at Pasadena Unified have been using this book as, I, I do think we may want to get copies, have been using this book as essentially a framework for their superintendent's budget advisory committee for the last couple of years. And so it was recommended to me by their board members a couple of times at Five Star. And essentially it is, but it is a lot of work. So that is one of the things that I wanted to, for us to have a discussion about because it is not simply like, hey, guys, here's, it's, it looks very different from LCAP. It looks very different from First Interim. It is going, first of all, it's a very large group of people, but not a discussion. And then it is going kind of programmatically to understand what does it mean to, like, I'll take an example that I was looking at because they have all of these presentations online, right? There's like 25 people in their group. So they have, you know, I think he recommends, let me go to chapter six again, please. He recommends stakeholders. I know. You guys, it's, it's a real, it's a real page turner too. So he recommends stakeholders that are basically not the board, not the superintendent, first of all. But that you have principals, you've got parents, you have other staff, you have teachers. You have other kind of community members. And who am I missing? You could have students. Did I not say parents? Parents. And then some, some administrative personnel, right? So, and then the actual program managers are the people who give the presentation. So what this looks like is one of the real hot button ones in Pasadena Unified this last time was athletics.
Right.
Right? So they're tasked with a much more robust deficit to deal with than we are at this time. But they basically said, okay, this is the amount that we spend on athletics. If we had to cut 20, or not 20, I think it was, it was basically like, if we had to cut 25%, this is how much money that would net. This is what we would do programmatically to do that. So we would take, we would take out sports programs at the middle school level. And I am very much paraphrasing here. I don't remember if these are exactly what the recommendations were. If we had to cut half, what we would do pro, this is how much money that would net cumulatively. So we would take out both the sports at the middle school level and we would take out sports at one of the high schools. Or we could switch, we could have one high school do these particular sports and the other high school do these particular sports. If we had to cut all of our athletics, this is how much it would cost, right? And so then what essentially happens is you have all of these program managers coming to this large group of people who are not, again, discussing, but are providing input to a process where they say, these are my, these are the priorities from where I sit of how you make these cuts, right? Or what, what I think is the priority of going into this budget. They can ask clarifying questions of like, well, what does this mean? What's this acronym? What is this? What does this look like in a school day? But they're not there to advocate for any particular program. And eventually what they did at the end was to look at all of those programs and basically rate and rank all of these different proposals that they got from staff. And that put together a recommendation that came from this superintendent's budget advisory committee that then was presented to the board. Dr. Aragonyan? Thank you. So what, I do want to recognize though, that it is a big lift on staff, right? So it, it does require staff to say, if I am in charge of all of elementary, because I have direct eye line with Dr. Harris, right? So what is that, what would that mean even in, in that context, right? One example that he gives in the book is on student teacher ratio, right? We could also, you could split it up into large buckets or into discrete buckets, right? On, we've talked about behavior, like how do we do behavior intervention? How do we do campus supervision, right? And so this might be too big a hunk to bite off right at this particular moment. But I want to think about how we could get to a place where we aren't simply saying, what is the nut that we need to figure out for this year? And just like gathering bits and pieces from the budget and being a little more strategic about it on, for, so that we're able to say, okay, we're, we have figured out what is, what's our priority for the budget over the course of three to five years? So that we don't find ourselves. So that we don't find ourselves every single year trying to cobble together $2 million or $3 million or whatever it is, because that is where we find ourselves, in my experience, every single year.
I have a question.
Yes.
Did Pasadena hire a consultant, something to get them started on?
No.
It was all done in-house?
It was all done in-house. And at this point, without a CBO.
Look, everyone, I think this is wonderful. I think that I already can, if they're using, I think it's great. Maybe we should get some copies. Should we get some copies for ourselves to start with, if it's a good one?
Sure.
Maybe we should do that. Get some copies, anyone interested from the board, maybe. Maybe I'll give us what the book is and we can buy it and see if it's something that we're interested in.
Well, I, I think, I mean, so I would, I would be very interested in getting the book. But I also think that this is something I want us to institute, not this, but a committee or, so I think in the meantime, you know, I think Vice President Ponsor Kamkar makes a really important point about the, the lift for staff, especially right now for us. And, and also too, you know, sort of what, I want to work backwards, no, it's not even working backwards. And think a little bit about like, what our community is asking for and also what we, what would really be beneficial to us within like a realistic parameter. So you talked in the beginning about this model and then the other one was, was it the budget advisory?
This is, this is budget advisory and the other one is fiscal review.
Okay, so.
I was just saying, like, more like operations.
Okay, so I mean, I guess I, because this is not my area of expertise.
People will be shocked to hear.
In your mind, like, what do you see, just your opinion, as a model that would work right now? That, that wouldn't perhaps be as, and maybe we work towards that or we talk with our fiscal department and talk about what we, how many years we think it would take to get there. But what, what do we, what do you realistically think would be impactful right now and also sort of doable right now?
And I think that's important because this committee did exist in the past, but I'll be honest with you. It wasn't structured.
Well, I think it was more COVID that killed it, right?
No, it was there.
I don't mean it like that.
It was, it was, it was there, but it wasn't like, so if we're bringing it back, I want it to be, make sure, we make sure it's really structured, meaningful, long-term. It existed, but it wasn't like, it was just another committee and.
Yeah, I have no idea. Definitely was before my time.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I am trying to figure out what is an interim step here, right? Given, given where we are, given where we are in the school year, frankly. Because like I said, Pasadena just completed, they, they did this process. They had their superintendent's budget advisory committee meet basically every week for six weeks straight and then they were done, which was fascinating.
Would they tell you, I don't know if you've asked them, like, would they tell you that they, that that was a successful model for them? That they would do it that way again? Would?
I'll ask tomorrow at Five Star. I mean, I, I talked to, I have a, an old coworker of mine sat on their budget advisory committee both years. And so I actually talked to him for quite a bit of time about it. And he found it very, like, he found it to be very edifying as a parent in the district.
And there was a reason for the six weeks because of what they've been facing as a district.
Well, and part of the reason is that if you wait too long in between presentations, you kind of forget what the first presentation was, right? And so I think maybe what, where we could start, right, is I feel like our, and I, I think I've said this before, but I feel like our LCAP presentations have come so far. But our, the budget side of it has really focused just on the LCFF funding and really what we're, like, how we're maneuvering dollars around there rather than, here is the overall picture of our funding and what that means for, what the big levers are in that, right? And so I'm, I'm looking at Dr. Abdelhami, but like, when I think about what the big levers for our funding are, it's student-teacher ratio, right? It's, I mean, that's, that's the biggest one. I, I, like, I'm trying to think of what they would be in terms of classified staff. But like, how do you think about that when you're putting together the budget so that we could explain it to people? So they could understand, like, these are the real things that were, that are going into our budget rather than how do we programmatically, like, like clip around the edges?
Yeah. I do think the programmatic approach, and we kind of briefly talked about this internally, too, but almost having every department do a presentation of their current staffing, their current non-personnel spend. I can sit up here and present numbers, but I don't know that in, in the weeds detail of why an expense was the way it was, because I'm not a department director of facilities or special ed or all of these different departments. So I do feel like that, like, essentially just a learning period or kind of information gathering period of, here are year-over-year numbers for each department. I don't want to say justify your FTE, but rationalize to the community why you have these people, why the hours are what they are. And from there, like, you start with that learning phase. You move to that second phase of exactly what you're talking about of, hey, as a committee, they are then determining, from what we heard and in collaboration with this department, if we had to cut 5%, where would we start? I totally, I mean, totally agree. In terms of the fiscal one, just the fiscal advisory one, I think even just having a couple of goals, and I don't know if you want to set that right now, but like, for, for me, for instance, a goal of this district really should be to go cashless within the next two, three years. Like, that's, that's honestly a goal. And maybe there are some exceptions. But having those conversations has to be something that this sort of committee starts to have.
I mean, it makes me think about something that we have talked a little bit about in recent months, which is having these sort of like, pretty regular sort of fiscal town halls, for lack of a better word. And it could be, you know, maybe that's in addition to having a committee that takes a deeper dive. But I think if each, each one of them had a different focus and whatever the focus could be, which is really, I mean, a lot of it is like fiscal education, right? Like, making sure our community really understands all these different components. And it could be broken down departmentally, it could be broken down, however we imagine it. But I wonder if that's a separate piece from what we're talking about here, but that, and maybe it's three times a year. Maybe it's whatever, but that we do, we, we call on members of our staff to really help people who are invested in BUSD understand how the fiscal, because it's so hard. I mean, we all know how difficult it is to understand. So.
Everyone, this is, this is a consideration, so I think we can come back.
Can I finish my thought? Thank you so much. I think it would be really helpful to think about it, is like, is this a separate thing entirely? Like, do we talk about doing three fiscal, like, education sessions a year in addition to LCAP? How much weight would that put on staff? And like, because that could be something different than the deeper dive that I think I hear you suggesting with like a select group of people that would serve in a more advisory capacity. So this doesn't have to, we don't have to continue talking about the education piece, but I do think that should, that should exist somewhere. But as, you know, a way to sort of bring in a larger group of people. Yeah, no, I know. So just wanted to float that because I think, you know, we hear from so many people who want to learn more and it's difficult to figure out an avenue to do that.
Two questions. First one, just how did you see, you know, in terms of us getting stakeholders in on this? In terms of how, you know, I can understand how we get administrators, we get principals, but just, you know, it's a large group that you're saying. And then with what Dr. Weisberg's saying, could we think of that, the idea that you're saying, you know, letting people understand how it works for the general public? Because, you know, even having been at TOSA and looking, having Title I and Title VI and Title V, and still kind of go, wait, which pot can I put this? Which, this was in the olden days. We had the library fund and the this fund. So even still, it's still difficult to kind of go through. So.
Are we having a discussion about considering to establishing this? Or are you asking her, because right now the question is, are we going to consider establishing a budget advisory committee?
Well, I think she's trying to understand what it would actually look like to have a budget advisory committee. So it would be focused on general fund money, right? That's, that's definitely the suggestion in the book and what, and what Pasadena Unified did. And, and I think you have to really lay that out for folks, is that like, those, those are the monies that are really, even though they're not, I was going to say they're restricted, but they're not restricted, but they are in limited supply. They are in limited supply. And the way that you could, the way I believe that they picked folks, and I think it's still on their website, they just had like a Google form and said like, do you want to participate? And then I think actually, it might have even just been the superintendent who just said, who just picked people, right? And like I said, the superintendent didn't participate, the board didn't participate. It was really only senior staff in the cabinet that participated in these, in these actual meetings. So I think it was, it probably was the CBO to begin with who was facilitating, at least the previous year. And then after that, it was the kind of program managers were kind of going in and, and doing each meeting.
So do you see that, like, happening, this happening now so that this group then can help focus as for this next, you know, for before July, before July 1st?
So I like this idea, right? So what Dr. Abdelhami was suggesting is instead of going at a programmatic level was to look at kind of department level. And I think that might be a more helpful lens at this point, given that that might be a more manageable piece for us to, for, for a budget committee to chew on, right? They may, they may not be able, they may want to say like, I want to understand what all the different pieces are in this. But that might be a better scope for them for this year. And then we do the real full nitty-gritty, let's look at every tiny little bit the following year. But I do think that that is where there's a lot of confusion in the public is, is what, like, what are the, what are the budgets allocated to each of these places? How many people are working there? What are they doing, right? And there's, and there's some confusion there. And so it might be that that is what that group is tasked with. And so if we established it, so I guess this, this would be my proposal then, is that we would, we would still pull together these folks, but it would still involve some staff work of saying, but hopefully this wouldn't be like a real, a deep dive because you should know your department pretty well, right? Of like, what's your, what's your budget? How is it being spent, generally speaking, right? Who's on your team? And then if we could even like identify, because you were saying there's, there's personnel costs, there's non-personnel costs, right? And I think if we could figure out how to bring forward to that group, like, some, basically all the non-school site kind of expenses, that might be where to start. So I'm willing to have folks react to that proposal in a negative way, but that, that is a proposal.
Can I, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, if you, if you're able to provide kind of, if you're sitting in one of these meetings or someone's sitting and they want to see a standardized presentation or data set every time, if that, if that information can just be provided, then we can create almost like a tool and then you toggle to that department. And then that way, that department director doesn't necessarily have to do so much.
Every time.
They're just really talking about the qualitative side.
Yep. Yeah, I was kind of going to just embellish on your plan a little bit because I'm just peeling from what everyone's saying. I feel like we're looking at like a calendar year and like, what do people need to hear the most and when? Like, I think what you kind of said was like, this learning phase really should be prior to like, kind of what we just passed, right? Like, every department going through and explaining those different things, communicating to the public what we do, why we do it. And then like, as this moment right now, planning for the next fiscal year should be when this committee is like in its prime moments. And then I think the third part of that year should be reflection and evaluation so that the next year has informed decisions. Like, I think that if we start right now, it's actually a prime time. Even if we don't even make that much progress, just like gather the two committees, get the humans, and then we can kind of maybe set a sort of calendar framework and then plan for it to be a continuing thing. Because I, again, I am really conscious of staff's bandwidth right now.
We need clarification. It says and/or fiscal. So are we voting on a budget advisory committee and a fiscal review committee?
I think we're talking about the discussion and providing direction. I think we're still in like direction land.
We're not, we're not giving, we're not voting.
Yeah.
We're just, we're giving direction to staff. And we're just giving direction to staff. So I think on the fiscal review side, I think that one feels very different and I think wouldn't be a, you know, it would, it would be less kind of, bring every educational partner from every, every group in. We're really looking for, in my mind, right, we're really looking for people who have expertise in some of the areas that we would be seeking, right? And so we're looking for people who have, who say like, I've spent, you know, 20 years as a CPA or an audit or, or whatever, right? To come in and say like, oh, we've done this differently and this is how we did it. Is that even possible to do it this way within an education setting? And sometimes it's not. But, yeah.
Which would be good for people to hear that, that we don't run like private sector. We run in a very different system.
Sometimes, yeah.
But a question that, have you seen any other places that are doing this? Or do you have any other models you're looking at besides Pasadena?
No.
So, so as we are voting on this consideration, also, do we want to, because deadline-wise, we want to come back for the next steps?
I don't know that we need to vote, but.
So we're not, I mean.
No. I think we would be giving direction to, to staff to say, go ahead and let's, let's set these up, right? Unless you, unless they are hearing from us that there's not a consensus that we want them to be set up.
Yeah, we do want to set them, but also timelines are important.
Right, timelines are important. So let's talk about when we want them to be set up. And does, it looks like Dr. Macias maybe has questions.
I, I and the team can start drafting structure and composition. And that's something that immediately, given more discussion or if there is more discussion, but we're, we're ready to work with this deeply, immediately.
All right, any other questions? Can I get a motion and a second?
We don't need to move on.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Dr. Agarwati, I would say that, I guess I would ask back to Dr. Macias and team. Has our discussion given you enough to feel like you could get started? Or are there more specifics? Because I think we've stayed pretty high level intentionally. But to get tactical, like, I do think maybe you proposing a framework back to us as a next step would be great. But does that sound reasonable?
Very reasonable. We're ready to go.
Okay.
We'll get to work.
I think we're good then. Anyone other? Okay.
12P, acceptance of gifts. Can I get an enthusiastic motion and enthusiastic second for acceptance of gifts?
So moved. I'll second.
All right, a very enthusiastic first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Board member Olson, can you read our list of donors?
Oh, sure. You gave it to me and I was wondering why. I was like, thank you. I have this.
No, I'm sharing it with everyone.
Sorry, the whole thing. All right, so the Bret Hart PTA wishes to donate to the district $1,186. Bret Hart PTA wishes to donate to the district $10,000 to be used, both to be used at Bret Hart Elementary. Edison PTA wishes to donate to the district $3,500 to be used toward assemblies at Edison. Edison PTA wishes to donate to the district $5,000 to be used toward field trip transportation at Edison. Maureen Bear wishes to donate to the district $855 to be used toward first and second grade play at Emerson Elementary. Hooray. Miller Parents wish to donate to the district $110 to be used toward disaster supplies at Miller Elementary. Miller Parents wish to donate to the district $3,086 to be used toward disaster supplies at Miller Elementary. Miller Parents wished to donate $393 to be used toward field trip transportation at Miller Elementary. Peter Lars Incorporated wishes to donate to the district $776.82 to be used toward cornerstone photography at Stevenson. Providencia Parents wish to donate to the district $620 to be used toward the choir at Providencia. Providencia Parents wish to donate to the district $1,580. Providencia Parents wish to donate to the district $1,580 to be used toward choir at Providencia. Providencia Parents wish to donate to the district $225 to be used toward third grade field trip chaperones. Providencia Parents wish to donate to the district $920 to be used toward third grade field trip and chaperones. Providencia Parents wish to donate to the district $69 to be used toward student council. Providencia Parents wish to donate to the district $889 to also be used towards student council. Providencia PTA wishes to donate to the district $18,270 to be used towards education, towards education through Music LA Orchestra for fourth and fifth grade at Providencia. Providencia PTA wishes to donate to the district $15,000 to be used toward field trip transportation and admissions. Roosevelt PTA wishes to donate to the district $4,000 to be used toward family engagement nights at Roosevelt. Textbook Warehouse LLC wishes to donate to the district $244 to be used toward the purchase of instructional media and technology materials at Muir. Here. The Black Blood Giving Fund wishes to donate to the district $807.66 to be used as needed at Huerta Middle. The Black Blood Giving Fund wishes to donate to the district $500 to be used as needed at George Washington. And Whole Foods Market, Whole Kids, wishes to donate to the district $3,500 to be used toward Edison Garden at Thomas Edison.
There you go. Let's have a round of applause, everyone. Thank you, Board Member Olson, and thank you to our donors, every donation, big or small. You are transforming the lives of our students. Yes. Okay. All right, next we have consent agenda items. May I get a motion and second to approve items 13A, 13, 13I, and 13K as presented, and 13J as amended? Dr. Weisberg?
I just have two things, two items that I wanted to discuss.
Under consent?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
My first question was for 13B. Ironically, I'm not going to vote on this, because I was not there, but I want to make sure that the minutes are correct. So if you go down to, all the way down to 14 something or another, hold on. Oh, sweet Lord.
It's under 14J.
Forty, between 14J and 15. So I could be wrong, but it says that Board Member Olson abstained. She made the motion, it was seconded by Vice President Ponser Kamkar. The board approved the item as recommended, the motion carried unanimously.
So I was looking at this just now, because, so what happened was, we pulled 14B because it was in a meeting that I hadn't been at, and neither had Ms. Olson, obviously, and so we pulled it until you were back. And so that's right above that, right? And then I moved that we approved 14A, which was set of minutes that Ms. Olson could not be at. So that's why it says Ms. Olson abstained. And then the rest of the consent agenda was then moved. And so that's why it says it was moved by Kelsey Olson and seconded by Abby Ponser Kamkar.
Okay.
So it would have been helpful for that piece to be, to have the agenda items that were moved by Ms. Olson.
It, yeah, I think it would be helpful to give feedback to.
Which is probably 14C through 14J.
Okay.
But I don't know if it's, we could make that edit now and approve them as amended, or we can pull it, I.
I mean, I don't think, as long as, as long as it's not incorrect, which it sounds like it is not, I don't know that we need to do anything, do we? Okay, that's fine. Okay. Yeah, but this was not an issue, it was more of a question, I noticed, and nobody needs to, this is not a bad thing. So I was looking at, through the PO report, and I noticed an item for turf repair, which is totally reasonable and normal, but in light of us building two new softball fields that I'm going to assume will be turf, I think I would just love to know, like, what is our budget for turf repair generally on an annual basis? Like, I'm just curious to know what we spend, so that that's something that we can budget for once the fields are both done, because you have to do regular repair. And it's actually much cheaper with turf than it is with grass, so I think it would just be helpful for me to know. So that was not a question or concern, but it just raised an interesting thought for me.
Right, and I, I can answer, well, address a part of that. I know specifically for Memorial Field, the age of the field itself is starting to really show.
For sure.
And the patches that we're, we're having to add, we have to have some serious conversations and planning about what that's going to look like moving forward, a replacement. We're, we're at that point where we need to really start exploring that. So I wanted to make sure that, that, that's been shared by both athletic departments from both high schools, because they both use the field.
For sure, thank you.
I do have a question that, just, if we're, that's just the, that's just the turf, or we're also talking about the Tartan Track? Or the whole?
Right now, I can only speak to the turf, which has been shared with me, but I'm sure that others have been made aware about the track, but we'll fully analyze that as well too, as part of that. Anything else you want to add, Mr. Maxwell?
Just real quick, Dr. Mercedes, yes, the tracks both need resurfacing currently. We've been told by the vendor that we're at the end of the life. If we don't resurface right now and put an overlay, then we're going to have to do a complete refurbishment. So we'll be bringing that forward. The good news in all this is joint use dollars help pay for these, so that's really important for the community to hear, because the community also uses these fields, and they use this track. So that money does help tremendously, and there is money put aside every year towards this, so. I don't know what bucket it's in, but I do know it exists, so. It's in a bucket. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Vice President Kamkar, you going to press that button, or no? Okay, all right. You're ready hovering. All right, so just for correction, so what was, so we had a, can I get a motion for everything I read, with the one that we pulled, right? That Dr. Weisberg. Yes. So again. Yeah, you want to read that? Yes. And 13J as amended. As amended, too.
13A, I move, we approve, 13A. Second. Wait, 13C through 13I as presented, 13J as amended, and 13K as presented. So ashamed.
I second.
All right, we have a motion and second of whatever she just presented. And then, thank you. And any questions?
No.
We're good?
Yes. Or something.
So we have a motion and a second. So again, just can you read it back, just, I mean, that's why, can you read it back again? 13?
13A as presented, 13C through 13I as presented, 13J as amended, and 13K as presented.
Where is the one that we, we were going to?
And we pulled 13B.
And 13B is pulled, okay. Perfect. Thank you. And we have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to. Reports from board members.
I have the slightest thing to say, because I didn't know when else to say it. That's fair. I, I just have to report back on my sort of roadshow that I've been going on at the schools, because as a newbie, I'm going around, and it's just been very, very cool, especially because it was my job previously to visit schools and do professional development and training, and every one of these schools has just been like incredibly warm, and just everything's so thoughtful and appointed, people are so nice, and it's just not normal practice. But a couple very cool things to point out. At Roosevelt, my own homeschool where my daughter is, I got to observe a coral counting lesson, and as someone who is very obsessed with, like, student agency in learning early on, it was just, it was remarkable. And I was with a whole group of parents getting to watch, and they got to experience the patience that it requires to let students process numeracy at a first grade level. And I could feel all of them being like, are we still waiting? Okay, cool, we're gonna, and it was, and then Principal Osman afterwards left and explained why those intricate little moments for learning are so impactful. And so like, I know this, because I'm, you know, education person, but everyone else getting to learn that firsthand was so cool that that was available to parents. And then today, was it today at Muir? Was that yesterday? Oh, hi. Watching an entire audience of middle schoolers laugh and be engaged with a comedian that was talking about mental health and awareness, I mean, come on, like, it was, it was magic. And they were all so sweet. And I got to at Borough's Go and witness some of the classrooms, and I got to see an English teacher in the middle of like, an awesome kind of reflection lesson discussion about Animal Farm, and kind of where she was bringing that to today, and it was very powerful. And I got to see an ASL classroom, like, where the students were leading the discussion, like, the discussion and a lab, it was just alive. And I just, I don't know, as someone coming in from the outside finally, like, getting into the moments in the schools, it just, just, it was very, very, very heartwarming. And it was, it's important to share that to the teachers and the school communities. And I can also see everyone in leadership just busting their butts right now to make up for absences and struggles across the board, and it's just, I could see it, it was notable. So thanks for letting me share.
Thank you for that, your wonderful comments. That's the magic of the, and the beauty of, that's why we do this. And I'm glad you're seeing that now. Any other comments from my, yes?
First of all, I would like to congratulate all the elementary school teachers that are just wrapping up parent conferences.
Woo!
It's a lot of work.
Props.
Really is, and, and then I too want to give a shout out to the Muir Empowered event today. It was, it was, it was really so well planned, and, and you can see that they've been doing this for a while. And they said, you know, and they've got it down to just a real science, you know, it's not too long, it's not too short. They've gotten people that really do hit the middle school, because I teach in a middle school, and I actually invited a guest from the district I work in, in Montebello, because we have something called a, a Community Schools Grant. And so one, the, the way they'd put together, I said, you've got to see what, talk about bringing in community and everything, it was just so well done. And so he was just absolutely amazed by this whole thing. And, yeah, to, because middle school's just.
The best.
The best, it really is. But it's just, you know, you've got this children, and yet they, you know, getting mustaches and the whole thing, and, and you, the, the, every, all the presenters they brought in understood middle school. And so the children, the children, students were all so engaged with, we went into small groups, you know, UCLA was doing a presentation then, and then we saw one of the big groups on social media and such, and then we saw that, yes, there was a comedian then, then there was another motivational speaker in the morning, and just, there was not a dud among them.
No.
They, they really understood what to do with the middle school audience. And again, continues that the message that they came through, and one of the, the comedian at one point, he just was telling a story and relating and such, and related that somebody he met, a man he met, you know, Big Cholo had said he felt, he'd felt that he was a mistake, and that he said, you know, he told him, he said, you know, the universe doesn't make mistakes. You know, it's, you are who you want to be. And it was like, oh, it was just, you know, the kids were just so engaged with it. So it was, it was very powerful. So shout out to Greg Miller, Dr. Miller, and to the, the, all the staff that put it together, because it was really very powerful.
Thank you, Board Member Kano. With that, we are going to retirements. We have one retirement. Veronica Satarkian, English language learner, been in the district Burbank High School from 1993. Congratulations, and enjoy your retirement. With that, we'll adjourn our meeting at 9:24. Is it raining outside?